Good evening, everyone. I would like to call today's meeting to order at 6:02. Prior to commencing today's meeting, I would just love to wish our community a Happy New Year. With that, if we can please have our City Clerk do roll call.
Yes. Mayor Protam and Vice Chairperson Melendez.
Here.
Councilmember and Member Jimenez.
Here.
Councilmember and Member Tamayo.
Here.
Councilmember and Member Torres. Mayor, Chairperson, Peralta.
Present. And Mr. City Attorney, will you please announce our closed session? Oh, yeah, our closed session items, thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and Chairperson to the successor agency. We have no closed session items for the successor agency, so we do have one item for closed session for the City Council. Anyone who wishes to address the City Council on that one item of Conference of Legal Counsel, existing litigation, the Navarro versus City Montebello matter, would have to fill out a card and submit it to the City Clerk prior to me calling this item. Mr. City Clerk, do we have any cards or requests to speak on the one item for closed session?
No speaker cards at this time for closed session.
Thank you. Then it would be appropriate, Madam Mayor, for the City Council to recess into closed session for the one item I just announced under Conference of Legal Counsel, existing litigation of our over City Montebello.
Okay, I would like to recess into closed session at 6:04. Thank you, everyone.
They're supposed to register.
So it's applicable to everybody, not just like if you've been here for thirty years, you've had a business for thirty years, does it go back to those businesses as well?
There is, which I'm here to talk about.
Okay.
I forgot, like, if it's currently vacant and then this is an active, if they're adding.
Good evening, everyone. We are back from closed session at six fifty-one. If we can please have our city attorney provide a report on closed session items.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. The record should reflect that the City Council, with all five members convened for closed session to discuss the one item that was listed and announced for inclusion in closed session. And the following is my report on the Navarro versus City matter. On that matter, the City Council considered a briefing from City Attorney and Special Counsel. There was no action taken, a direction was provided, however. But since there was no final action taken on this matter, there is nothing required to be reported pursuant to the Brown Act. That concludes my report from closed session. It's appropriate to continue with the open portion of the meeting at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. City Attorney. This evening, we have some very talented and incredible guests from our community that will be helping kicking off our first meeting of 2024. And I'm just extremely grateful for their time and just thankful for them to be here showcasing their talent and their passions with us. So today, we will be having first our invocation by our city clerk, Christopher Jimenez. We will be having our pledge of allegiance by our Scouts troop number thirty-three. And then we will be having a performance by our Shore High School Spartan marching band. As a Shore High School alumni, I'm just so extremely proud and happy to have you guys here. So we'll go ahead and start with our invocation first. Thank you so much.
Father, as we gather here today, we pray that we are ever mindful of opportunities to render our service to fellow citizens and to our community. Keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make a better world. We ask this in thy name. Amen.
If I could please call up our Scouts troop to conduct the pledge of allegiance.
Will everyone please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance? Face the flag. All those in uniforms salute the flag. Everyone else, please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To. Thank you.
That was absolutely incredible. Thank you so much. If I can please have our Scouts come up and our council come up as well. I would love an opportunity to take a photo with both the marching band and the Scouts. Thank you.
All right, everybody here? All right, we're gonna be looking right here, everybody, on the count of three. Here we go, right here. One, two, three. All right, one more. Here we go, one, two, and three. Excellent. Thank you so much, everyone.
Okay, so we will go ahead and reconvene. I do just want to again thank our Scouts troop thirty-three and our Shore High School Spartan marching band for joining us this evening to kick off our meeting. At this time, Mr. City Manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda at this time.
So moving forward with our ceremonial items and presentations, we do have our Citizen of the Month, Mr. Albert Rubacoba. If I can please have my colleagues join me again to the front and if we can have Mr. Albert join us as well. There we go. So today, we recognize someone who is a shining example of the values that make our city a close-knit and compassionate community, Mr. Albert Rubacoba. In 2017, Mr. Albert began his journey of community service by volunteering as an usher for the Catholic parish Our Lady of the Miraculous Medal. In 2018, Albert expanded his impact by joining the Knights of Columbus, an organization known for its charitable works and service. His involvement took various forms from assisting with food donations, organizing turkey giveaways during holidays, and actively participating in programs for disabled children. Another aspect of Albert's involvement with the Knights of Columbus is his commitment to supporting funeral processions. In moments of grief and sorrow, Albert stands as a pillar of support, offering his assistance to families in their times of need. He also supports biannual scholarships to local schools, fostering education and empowering our youth to achieve their dreams. If I could please have a very, very big round of applause for Mr. Albert. Mr. Albert, on behalf of the City Council, I would like to give you this certificate of recognition, and it reads, "It hereby presented to Mr. Albert Rubacoba in appreciation for your commitment to serve our city, our city's residents, and your significant contributions to improve the quality of life in our community." Residents like Mr. Albert is what makes Montebello such a special place. And so I really want to thank you as far as the contributions, the labor of love that you have given to the city of Montebello. Thank you so much, Mr. Albert. Would you like to say a few words?
It's an honor. And I believe Paul, it was an honor working with them at the YMCA. And I did it for three years, and it was great. I mean, I felt the feelings for the people that... And I didn't eat the... like, I was giving vegetables, so... I also, whatever I had left over, I gave it to the animals, which was at Grand Rave Park, so... Okay? Thank you.
We know someone has a huge heart when they respect and love our animals. So thank you so much, Mr. Albert. And let me go ahead and just fix this for you. And if we can please have a photo with our Citizen of the Month.
Oh, yeah, and we have a lot of little gifts for you. So we'll go ahead and hold them for the photos. Thank you so much. Oh, wow, look at that.
Congratulations.
Can we get one of our staff members to please help Mr. Albert with these items? Oh, let's get a picture with your daughter. Yeah, we have his daughter here as well, if she can please come up.
You don't have enough hands. Congratulations.
So up next, we're gonna go ahead and do the recognition of the Los Angeles Muay Thai athletes. I stand before you today with great honor to recognize and celebrate three very extraordinary individuals who have dedicated their lives to the art of Muay Thai. These athletes have endured grueling workouts, pushed their physical and mental limits, and faced opponents with a courage that inspires us all. As we applaud these fighters today, let us also recognize the coaches, the trainers, and support systems that have played an integral role in shaping them into the formidable competitors that they have become. At this time, I'd like to present certificates to the Los Angeles Muay Thai athletes for their accomplishments at the United States Muay Thai Open. D'Angelo Gianni won a gold medal. If we can please have him come up. Okay, we have Nathaniel Pampa won a gold medal. Yeah, thank you. Congratulations. And we have Valerie Mendez, who won a silver medal. Congratulations, Valerie. I would also just like to thank the coaches and trainers. I know I follow you guys on social media, and this is not the first time that you're here. And I truly have witnessed the level of commitment, the love that you have given to your athletes, and really creating such incredible youth in our community. And so I do just want to recognize your efforts and all the dedication that you have given to them. If we can please also have a round of applause for them. And if I can ask them to please come up for this picture as well. And if your family members are here, please feel welcome to come up as well for the photo. And our last presentation is on Human Trafficking Awareness Month. We start 2024 off by recognizing National Human Trafficking Awareness Month, which is observed annually in January to shine a spotlight on the grave issue of modern-day slavery. This dedicated month serves as a platform to raise public awareness about the prevalence of human trafficking and to encourage efforts to combat this heinous crime. Throughout this month, various organizations, government agencies, and activists engage in campaigns, events, and educational initiatives to inform the public about the different forms of human trafficking, such as forced labor, sex trafficking, and child exploitation. The significance of January originates from the Emancipation Proclamation declaring 1.3 million slaves free in the wake of our country's civil war. Today, it is estimated that nearly Today, it is estimated that nearly 27 million people, both adults and children, are trapped in some form of human trafficking around the world. The primary goals of Human Trafficking Awareness Month include dispelling myths, educating communities about the signs of trafficking, and promoting collective action to prevent and address this global problem. By fostering awareness and understanding, individuals can contribute to the ongoing efforts to eradicate human trafficking, support survivors, and advocate for stronger measures to combat this violation of human rights. Let's do our part by learning more about the crime and reporting situations if you suspect someone has fallen victim to human trafficking. To learn more, visit state.gov online and discover 20 ways you can help fight human trafficking. And we, oh, we actually have a few more presentations here, and so I will ask again my colleagues if they can join me to the front. Our next presentation is in recognition of our retiring K-9 Ace. Actually, before that, we actually do have our Tree People presentation, so if I can go ahead and have that first, and then we can do the recognition of our retiring K-9. Thank you.
Mayor, if it's, if it's okay with the council, maybe we can proceed with the presentation of the retired K-9 officer. Just sometimes they can get a little restless, and it's my understanding they were already bringing the K-9 in, right? Chief? So if it's okay, we can proceed? Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and proceed with the recognition of our retiring K-9. If we can please have our police chief, Estenosa, to the podium to present a plaque.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to present Sergeant Daniel Contreras and K-9 Officer Ace Contreras, right? Because he takes on the name of his dad here. So, timing-wise, it happened to work out. Both are, both are K-9 officers promoted to sergeant about the same time, and generally the dog would, would stay with them. It just so happened, our two particular, our two last dogs, both Barry, who you saw before, and Ace are at retirement age, right? They get a full Montebello pension of, of dog food. But, but yeah, so Ace is about seven years old, which the lifetime of a K-9 is about seven to nine years old for police work, and he's been with us for five years because it takes a couple of years for, to, to train him. And so Ace is a very protective and a very assertive dog for us, so he's done great work. They all have their individual personalities. I think you saw Barry last time, and now Ace. Barry was a great worker, but a very social guy, right? So he always wanted to make friends, where Ace is a little more assertive. But we would like to present this plaque to retiring K-9 Ace in recognition of loyal and dedicated service to the Montebello community and the department and partner Sergeant Daniel Contreras. Thank you for five years of dedicated service, appointed on November 9th, 2018, to the Montebello Police Department, and retired on December 12th, 2023. Ace, thank you for your years of service in protecting the Montebello community. Ladies and gentlemen, Ace Contreras.
I think he's a little bit more interested in his toy than he is the plaque. But this morning, I was asking him, I was like, what do you want me to tell in this, in today's, today's ceremony? He just wanted, he, we wanted to tell everybody in his team, thanks for, for all the support, thanks for the surrounding cities in the San Gabriel Valley area. And there wasn't one day where this guy was not ready to work. So he's been, he's been out of training, out of work for, for a couple of months now. But today, he went back into the K-9 car, got his vest back on, saw me back in uniform. It was a great day for him today. So we're going to end it off today by working with his patrol team, and no better place he'd rather be than at work.
Thank you, council.
If we can please get a round of applause for Ace. I would just like to say thank you so much to our K-9 Ace for the service that he has given to the city of Montebello. I wish him a retirement, a happy retirement, full of belly rubs and very long walks. Moving forward with our presentation, this is one that I have been very excited for, and I would love to welcome Tree People to the city of Montebello for their presentation here this, this afternoon, or this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Peralta, esteemed members of the council, stakeholders here in the city, really appreciate the, the space and the presence here. I want to just say that Tree People is such a special organization. We're celebrating our 51st year of its existence, and it's almost hard to follow an act like that, so please excuse a few stumbles. But in that 51-year history, we've planted 3 million trees with 3 million volunteers. So we're truly a community-driven, community-led organization. And our focus, especially over the last decade, has been laser-targeted on communities that need trees the most. And it was terrific to be a part of a wonderful project that I'll speak a little bit more on in the next couple of minutes, that took place here in Montebello and took place with a number of other gateway cities. But I'm going to pass it to my partner here, Brian, to talk a little bit about the mission of Tree People.
Thank you for your time. My name is Brian Vejar, and what I'd love to do right now is, before I get into my own introduction, is to point you towards Tree People's mission, and let's go up there. So the thing about Tree People is, you know, it has a wide scope of operations, so reducing it down to a simple sentence for a mission is really a difficult task, but I think we've done a really good job here. And so Tree People's mission is to inspire, engage, support people to take personal responsibility for their urban environment, making it safe, healthy, fun, sustainable, and resilient, and to share this process as a model for the world. So what does that mean? There you go. Well, we're not just a tree-planting organization. We have a large scope of duties, from being involved in water policy to public policy, eco-education, planting trees in communities, disadvantaged communities particularly, but also involved in mountain forestry, native gardening, habitat restoration, you name it, we're probably involved in it in the green sector, so.
Is the next slide cursor right there? Okay, great, tremendous, good point.
So here are a few of the people that you're probably going to be interfacing most regularly with the, I'm sorry, the Montebello team. Eileen Garcia is our Director of Strategic Partnerships and Operations. Gemma Larry is our Southeast LA Program Manager. Raquel Falco is the Regional Manager for both South LA and also the SGV. And myself, I'm Brian Vejar, and I am the Senior Manager of Aborocultural Training and Education. Just a little bit about myself, I've been a tree guy for my whole career, from, you know, a crew lead to a groundsman. I was a tree climber at Disneyland and California Adventure, and before Tree People, I was the Campus Arborist at Caltech. About a year and a half ago, I joined Tree People as a volunteer supervisor, and then as a foreman, and now as a senior manager of Aborocultural Training and Education. And what I love most about Tree People is that it's in the name, really. It's not just about trees, it's true people. It's one word, they don't separate tree from people. We really take a resident and community-based approach in order to amplify our impact in some of the most disadvantaged communities. And with that, I would love to introduce my partner here, Mr. Mario Doganow.
Yeah, a little bit about myself, and I'm going to try to turn to the audience and to the council. I have spent the last 13 years of my life involved with either the fight and struggle for social justice issues like human rights. I admire the fact that you have mentioned human trafficking this evening and the blight that that still, you know, is, it still has such an impact on this planet. And yet, more people in chains and bondage now than we've ever experienced in this planet's tenure, so not to be forgotten. But I've worked for organizations like Amnesty International, Greenpeace, and I've spent a lot of time traveling the nation and traveling the world, in fact, doing community outreach and engagement, donor development, and major donor development as well. Now I get the opportunity to come back home. I grew up in the San Gabriel Valley, Altadena, California, born and raised, and I feel very fortunate to have grown up in an area that provided me access to shade equity despite the fact that my family didn't have a lot of money. And I think that's an imperative for anyone that, that grows up here in Southern California, is access to green space and access to shade. And you shouldn't have to live in Beverly Hills or Santa Monica to have access to those things. This tree prioritization project that we worked on with Montebello included some esteemed partners from Loyola Marymount University and their Senate, and their Center for Climate Resilience, and they're wonderful, couldn't be here this evening, but wanted to make mention of their work on the project. And the project was funded by the California Resilience Challenge and a grant that was awarded to Tree People in LMU, and we worked in partnership with the Gateway City Council of Governments. In addition to, Southern California Edison donated the, the money that was provided for the fruit trees that we donated and distributed, and I really like to call them fruit tree adoptions, because somebody's giving that, that tree a home. And we were lucky enough to do a wonderful tree adoption here in this parking lot, actually, about a year and a half ago, June 19th, 2022. Those trees went quick, hoping to do another, another one soon. In terms of what the project consisted of, I mentioned tree prioritization. And before we put any shovels into, into the ground, I think it's really imperative to like have a strategic assessment of what the lay of the land is. And we were lucky enough to get a really, you know, detailed look at what the lay of the land was in four separate cities here in the gateway cities. And that included LiDAR mapping, and I'll talk a little bit more about what that means. It's not just like satellite imagery, it's far more accurate than most satellite images are going to like show you. Its accuracy is about 95% to 96% accurate in terms of being able to detail what's on a given parcel. And, you know, in terms of that fruit tree giveaway, I think, you know, there are many food deserts here in Southern California, so fruit tree adoptions are a part of pretty much all of our community forestry projects, and we're pretty proud of that. And a lot of our first connections to trees are through the trees that we see in our backyard or in our front yard. My, my abuelita, Uniana, first tree that I had a connection with was the lemon tree in my, in our backyard that's still alive today. So never had to pay for lemonade, and, and in today's day and age where there's a citrus tree disease and those are hard to come by, it's a blessing. So kick it over to Brian.
So if you'll indulge me for a bit, this is an exercise we like to do with a lot of our presentations, and, you know, this is a street that you'll see, and it's actually in Southeast LA, but it could be anywhere. It could be in the San Gabriel Valley, it could be San Bernardino, it could be Orange County, we've all driven streets like this. And if you will, all of you, just take a moment to put yourself in this scenario. You're walking down the street, perhaps it's August or July, you know, we're, we're having traditionally around mid-90s, low 100s, and I want you to kind of put yourself in, on that street right now, and ask yourself, what are you feeling? What are you hearing? What are you seeing? You know, like, this is a typical street in South LA. And are you happy to be here? Are you like comfortable? Are you, you know, perhaps it's the weekend, and you've been in an office all week long, and you just wanted to go on a morning walk, or you wanted to do some yard work, and you're out there too. And, you know, and then I want, the reason I bring this slide up, and I'm going to bring this next slide up, is to draw contrast. This is downtown Paramount. This is what we're striving for, right? This is the objective. This is what we're here to do to communities. We're here to bring a tree canopy. And what is tree canopy? It's the impact that trees can have in, in, in an area that would otherwise be desolate or dry. Trees have so many benefits, both physical, mental, emotional, social, and this is just a, a good way to delineate the differences between what a street could be and what it, and what it should be.
So this gives you a little indication as to the median tree canopy cover in most communities that we did the tree prioritization with, and it's about 12%. Montebello's a, is a smidge above that, at like 13, close to 14, but it's still a dramatic difference between where Tree People's headquarters is, Studio City Beverly Hills area, is going to have about a 25% to 30% tree canopy coverage, and that is a dramatic difference. It's a dramatic difference in air quality. It's a dramatic difference in, you know, as Brian articulated, how a person feels when you walk down the street that is tree-lined, you know? We use a term called shade equity, and, you know, you'll hear that in Tree People halls time and again. And, you know, what that means to me is, I don't have to run the AC as much when I live in a neighborhood that actually has some tree canopy coverage. That, that, that's a big difference, you know, when, when you, when you think about somebody's pocketbook, when you think about, you know, just like the, the benefits that a person gets both in mental well-being and physical well-being, it's a dramatic difference. And so that's just like, you know, kind of a snapshot of what like 25 versus 12% looks This is the census data, and it's, the green versus the like yellowish areas will give you an idea of like tree canopy, that, tree canopy coverage that exists in certain areas. The dark green is obviously where more trees exist, the yellow to like white areas are areas that need some love, need more tree canopy coverage. And you can, I don't have like the Zoom function, but you can kind of see like the breakdown. I mentioned Redondo Beach in Santa Monica, you're going to see tree canopy coverage percentages that are 30% plus in those communities. This is a tool that, a mapping tool that's used by environmental groups, by scientists, by, you know, policymakers. It's called the California EnviroScreen. And this data basically allows us to identify communities that, you know, have high percentages of pollution and other contamination factors, and also have low tree canopy coverage. And I'll just go like one slide back, just so you see like the correlation. Areas that don't have a lot of trees are in that red, and usually 100% means you've gotten an A. In this particular case, if you're like closer to 100% with the Callum EnviroScreen, that's not good. Montebello is in the, you know, the 60% to 70% range, so that means that more kids who live in Montebello are going to have asthma, are going to have bronchitis. More kids that live here are going to be More kids that live here are going to be exposed to air pollution. And I will click to this slide, which is, I think, the fanciest one of the day here. Monobello's that green spot. So as you can see, the more I click, the more we kind of, we demystify what, and I could talk to you about redlining and about the history of Southern California and why what exists here on this slide exists. I don't have, we don't have a ton of time in this presentation for me to dig in. But as you can see, areas that are in the orange to red are areas that are adjacent to freeways and major highways. The 710 alone has 165,000 cars and trucks that drive on that interstate every single day. That's air pollution, that's toxic brake dust, that's particulate matter that, I grew up with asthma, I was born with it. But a lot of kids develop it because of where they live. And I don't, I don't like that. And I don't think the parents of those children like it either, when you have to take a day off of work to take your kid to the doctor. Or you have to refill that inhaler prescription. So I really believe that these are, for lack of a better term, justice issues. Urban heat island effect. Some people have heard of urban heat islands. We here in Southern California are blessed and cursed. Blessed with like, you know, such a rich and diverse population of people, an abundance of economic opportunities, a great place to live. But a lot of non-permeable surfaces. So a bunch of concrete. And on a hot day, concrete is going to like reflect the heat. So just, and I, I'm a big fan of public transportation when I can take it. And that right there is a scene that I've witnessed at tons of bus stops in Southern California. There's no awning, there's no shade. And on a summer's day, sitting on that hot bench is 125 degrees on your bum. You know, if you decided to take a nap on that sidewalk, it'd be 140 degrees on a 100-degree day. I don't suggest, honestly, I don't suggest either. That person who's perched underneath the tree is sitting underneath a temperature that's 75 degrees. So just that, I think that variation alone explains a lot. And unfortunately, a lot of the cities that we did the tree prioritization with have a lot of what we see right there is low tree canopy percentage and a lot of concrete. Thus, in July, August, September, we're seeing that urban heat island effect have a severe impact. And I guess I'll buttress this with, you know, in terms of people that are most severely impacted by heat-related illness or death are the elderly and people of color. And that's across this country. So that, that has to change. And I'm going to kick it over to Brian to talk about the mental health benefits of trees.
So of course, there's a lot of physical benefits of trees. I mean, it's common sense, you stand under a tree in a hot day, you're in the shade of the tree and you're considerably cooler and more comfortable. Also things like, also things like, you know, noise attenuation and particulate matter capture, stormwater runoff, these are all physical benefits of trees that are readily observable when you see trees. But there is also a host of different benefits that trees confer upon a community that aren't so easily quantifiable. So we like to talk about the brain and the heart and illness in this. And we'll start off with the brain. Being in a natural area helps to calm and renew the brain's thoughts, improving the ability to focus. So more broadly, all these benefits that we're listing here, these social and psychological benefits are backed up by real science. In fact, we've come a long way in the past couple of decades in urban forestry. There's ongoing research globally that show and display positive correlations between increasing green space and canopy cover and amelioration of some of the most deleterious mental disorders. And so this is just one of the many. In fact, and this is also a good opportunity to sort of tag our equity program. We provide field trips for disadvantaged communities into the Angeles National Forest and to our headquarters in Coldwater Canyon to show people what it could be like if you're surrounded by trees in a really good and calming and healthy, long-term, sustainable, sustainable green space. Next slide. The heart. So in addition to the psychological benefits, they have also other internal benefits to us. Having contact with nature positively impacts blood pressure, cholesterol, lowers heart rate and reduces stress hormone cortisol. And the stress hormone cortisol, that's our flight or fight response, right? And so just being among the green space and being in green infrastructure and being in the presence of trees naturally lowers these levels to a point where you'll have a reduction of all sorts of things like irritability and high blood pressure and other, you know, symptoms of chronic disease. Illness, talking about chronic disease, this is a, you know, a famous study done in a variety of hospitals where they took patients and placed them in hospital rooms that were facing trees. And then observed that they showed less symptoms or chronic symptoms of pain, they healed faster. And it's no, it's no, you know, it's no coincidence either. You know, in fact, if this was only one instance of, you know, observation in one particular hospital, then we might be able to say, ah, it's a coincidence. But it's happening globally. People function better when they're in green spaces. They function better when they're in view, not just in them, but in view of them. So that really shows what kind of impact that we can have community-wide by just introducing more green space into our community. And there's no reason why we can't.
Okay, so what is tree canopy cover? And that's what we really worked to ascertain here in this study. And LMU did a wonderful job at doing a block-by-block, parcel-by-parcel breakdown of the tree canopy coverage in each of the four cities that we worked with. And so this kind of gives you an overhead view of, you know, what a common city street in Monobello looks like. And like, you know, the first step in the tree prioritization project that we did was really ascertaining like how much tree canopy coverage do we have? Because before you can think about like how much, how many trees can you add? You got to think about like what exists already. And so the existing tree canopy coverage is like where we started. And then we, you know, had to think about like how much room exists to actually like plant these trees. And that's where we like break it down into the second category, that's what's possible. And so not everywhere where it's possible to plant trees is a feasible place to plant trees. We'll kind of break that down a little later. But that's where ground truthing and a lot of like, you know, the work that we do with community stakeholders comes into play, is really ascertaining like, and that's the workshop in the Tree Summit that we did a couple of years back. That's what that was about, was like defining what exists, talking to folks about what's possible and then really defining what the priority is. Like what, what do you want to see in your neighborhoods? Where do you want to see these trees? Why do you want to see them? And I think when communities have agency and ownership of a process before it begins, that process tends to be a bit more successful. As opposed to when you have the organization riding in on the white horse, trying to save the day with a plan that hasn't been vetted or sussed out by key community members and folks that just care. And the people that show up to a Wednesday night Tree Summit are folks that care in Monobello and want to see trees planted in their neighborhood and want to have input on that. So I think it was a beautiful thing to be a part of and we hope to like be a part of more conversations just like it. And as you can see, like, you know, all of our slides, the Tree Summit that we, all the Tree Summits and workshops that we do are bilingual. For the sake of time, I, you know, invite folks to, if folks would like to hear this version in Spanish. I would love for folks, we have a recorded version of our Tree Summit where I broke it down in both languages for the sake of time, I'll keep it in English. But what is the tree canopy cover data? Like how do we break that down? How do we disseminate it? And it really breaks down into those categories right there. You know, tree canopy is like, those are the trees that already exist, that we've mapped out. But then there are those subcategories, like there are some areas that are grass areas where you might want to plant a tree. There are some shrubs that you might want to like replace with actual trees that are going to, you know, provide shade. There are bare soil areas that are just like tree wells waiting to happen. And then you see other paved. So in cities, we're working in the city of San Fernando on the Caias Verdes grant. And that project includes planting street trees, but it also includes like ripping up some concrete, doing some curb cuts, putting trees where they once were, from, you know, what somebody would have looked at a couple of years ago, you wouldn't think trees could exist there. It's going to help with stormwater capture, provide more shade. And it's going to have multiple different benefits associated with that particular project. It's projects that we're working on across Southern California with many other cities. So yeah, like those consist of the possible tree canopy. So grass, shrub, bare soil, some paved surfaces. We might define those as like areas that you can actually put some trees. And then there are areas that just aren't feasible. You know, buildings, roads, you know, railways. These are areas that, you know, these are just not suitable areas to plant trees and that's okay. We understand that. After doing, bam, after doing the data, and this is just a kind of a basic image of what a lot of organizations were using in years past, that's just satellite imagery that's about 80% accurate. This is the LiDAR mapping that we were using, which involves low-flying aircraft that, you know, map areas with higher detail and better accuracy. And I've mentioned 95 to 90%, 95 to 96% accuracy with like the parcel level breakdown. And we did that in all four cities that we worked with. So we did it block by block. So those, that red is all areas that we can't plant. And when you really break it down, that's what it, that's what it amounts to. Is like we could go through the entire city of Monobello and see every single tree that's planted, see those grass areas, define some of those bare soil surfaces. And, you know, ascertain where those buildings are and other areas that are just not suitable to plant in. At the end of all of that data and that research, we define that there's 13% tree canopy coverage here in Monobello. As you'll see in the next couple of slides, you're better off than Vernon, which is less than 1%, unfortunately. Of all the cities that we worked with in the Gateway Cities. And they've made a, they've actually made some strides in the right direction since 2022. But that's, that's, yeah, that's not great. But 13% is something that we know we can improve upon based off of what we see here. We know that there's about 48% that's possible. And of that 48%, it's not going to be a one-to-one ratio where we can plant trees in all of that area. But there are definitely going to be areas in that 48% that can be exploited. And that's the intention of this project, was to really define what it was possible and feasible to exploit in terms of growing tree canopy coverage. And this is, you know, sort of a, as I said, a breakdown of the four cities that we worked with. We worked with Linwood here in beautiful Monobello, Paramount and Vernon. And as I said, Vernon, right now is a little closer to 1% now. They've planted 150 trees since we, since we worked with them. And that was in part based on the findings of the study that we did. And I can say that we have tree planting grants with both Linwood and Paramount that are funded to plant street trees and also that will involve fruit tree distributions. So I think that's one of the purposes of this meeting is, Monobello cannot be the only city in the tree prioritization study that is left out of the fray. And there is so much funding available for urban greening and green infrastructure. And it's just about collaborating and aligning ourselves in a manner where we can grab it and make Monobello a greener and, and just, you know, a more beautiful city to live in for the generations to come. Because what we do today is really going to have benefits 20 to 30 to 40 years from now. Kind of talked about a parcel level breakdown. There are some areas that are like looking pretty good. Right around Monobello Library, got a pretty dense tree canopy coverage, you know? We got some areas aptly named the Sycamore. And I believe it's right off of Sycamore Street. And I think it's Sycamore and Sequoia, two streets that are named after trees that have a nice little pocket and swath of trees that dot that area. So that's the good. These are areas that like, we know that aren't bad, but are areas that actually like present opportunities. That area includes every, you know, the surrounding areas include everything that kind of like dots around the 99 cents only store through the Holiday Inn. And you can see that there's a lot of green space there that provides opportunities to help grow tree canopy coverage here in Monobello. And then that's an elementary school, La Merced. So we do a lot of school greening as well. And we're a part of lobbying for $150 million of school greening funding that was passed last year. And our policy and research team, you know, fought hard to get more money included in that package. Because we know that schools all around, you know, Southern California, LAUSD, biggest, you know, one of the biggest landowners in all of Southern California. Great opportunity to green some schools, you know, and that's what we're working on. So I talked about what's technically possible, but not also socially preferable. And that's a baseball field. I grew up playing baseball. Don't want to see like trees planted, you know, at the pitcher's mound. As much as I love trees and I actually played baseball at Fawnsworth Park and you could see trees dotting, you know, the Angeles Forest as you looked out from home plate. So I'd love to see them out where you can hit the home runs. Don't want to necessarily see them in right or center field. So the parcel-by-parcel breakdown allows us to kind of like define, that's just not an area that we're going to even look at. It's not possible. Where the community came in is like, knowing what's possible can help us decide like what's a priority. Some people want to see trees for a variety of different reasons. Some folks want to lower those energy bills. They're like, hey, I spent a lot of money on running the AC during the summertime. If I had, if I lived on a block that had fully mature trees, I would be able to run the AC a little less, sit on the porch a little bit more. Some folks care about the mental health and well-being, we talked about that. I grew up with asthma, I probably would say air quality would be one of the major factors. And personally, me wanting to see more trees in a given area. And we did a needs assessment survey with the city of Monobello and all of the Gateway Cities that we worked with that included a questionnaire where folks could rank why they wanted to see trees come to their neighborhood so that we could get a real indication, a real heartbeat for like why cities wanted to see trees and where they wanted to see them. And we did this really fun, interactive map where folks could like use pins and drop pins on a map and plant them where they wanted to see trees planted. So we were really able to get not just like the survey answers, but also like, you know, a visual geographical, you know, sort of identification of where folks wanted to see trees planted and why. These are the questions that we used. And the biggest, 25% of the respondents answered that they wanted to see improved air quality in Monobello and that's why they wanted more trees planted. Three answers ranked, I guess carried more than half the vote. It was air quality, it was lack of tree canopy, and then it was improvements to the parks. Folks want to see more trees at the park. You know, so I think, you know, that's Monobello's snapshot. The snapshot in Linwood's a little different. Snapshot in Vernon where there are 200 residents versus 50,000 workers, a little different. So, you know, I think that's, I think that's where we gained a lot of insight and were able to learn a lot about like the needs of the communities that we're working with and got the opportunity to, you know, really the blessing to work with throughout the prioritization project. I want to pass it to Brian, who's like the tree expert. You know, I can talk about them. He puts them in the ground and is a professional arborist. So I'm going to pass it to him to talk about what tree species we're planting in this region of Southern California.
Thank you, Mario. So as I said, as he mentioned, I am certified arborist and tree risk assessor. And this is one of the most common questions we get. What are we putting on the ground? Why are we putting these particular trees and not these other ones? I want to see really big trees. I really, I want to see really small trees. This tree is making too much of a mess. This one is, is too large. It's going to fall over on, on my house, you know? This one, the birds are perching in it and it's pooping on my car, you know? There's all kinds of reasons why people love certain species and hate others. And so I think what the most important thing we do when we're doing species selection for our community is finding trees that work in the spaces and are going to thrive in the areas that we put them in. And so we're doing advanced site assessments. We're doing soil measurements. We're doing minimum soil volume measurements. We're measuring utility clearances. We're planting trees that are, you know, can get the most bang for a buck in each area that we plant them in. So here's a couple of trees that I'm sure you've seen in your neighborhood. Crape myrtles are famously, you know, planted all throughout Southern California because they're basically bulletproof. I mean, they're not, they're immune to most diseases. They're immune to drought generally. They're low maintenance. They don't get too large. But, you know, the problem is they're kind of suffering from success. We plant them everywhere. And something that I'm sure a lot of you have, you know, learned about in school at some point is what a monoculture is. When you only plant one particular species throughout a city or any kind of environmental landscape, if one disease or one pest comes through, everything can be lost. And so it's really, species diversity is something that we really are keyed in on in our own planting program. Lemon bottle brush, it gets, you know, it has a really nice fragrant smelling leaf and it doesn't get too large. It's something that you can plant underneath a utility line without, you know, having it topped at some point. How many times have you seen that, right? A really large tree, you know, planted in the wrong space and it's too large and it's lifting the sidewalk, right? Or it becomes a hazard. It's branches reach out into the transportation corridors and can conflict with either utilities, buildings or vehicle traffic. Strawberry trees are a wonderful tree that we like to plant. They're an evergreen tree, so if people don't like, you know, cleaning up leaves, here's your tree. It also attracts hummingbirds and, you know, has these really beautiful, this beautiful exfoliating bark. And this is just a small snapshot of the dozens and dozens of different kinds of species that we bring into every community based on its needs and based on what is going to thrive there. What's going to thrive in Montebello isn't necessarily what's going to thrive in El Monte or in San Bernardino. And so we're very intentional with what we choose and we look at what is already growing and what is already thriving in Montebello. And we seek to mirror that and accommodate that in a lot of our decisions in our planting palette. We also look, we work very closely with city officials, the city arborists and public works in order to decide exactly what's going to go and where. We can't plant anything unless they sign off on it. So rest assured. So these are a few of our most frequently asked questions. Are these trees going to lift up the sidewalks or break through pipes? Trees are generally assigned a root potential, root damage potential rating. We only plant trees that are in, that are in smaller parkways or where there's limited soil volume that have low root damage potential. We also plant larger trees in areas that can accommodate them. So we, in this effort, we mitigate any potential damage to lifting sidewalks because that's a liability concern, right? You guys have to comply with ADA standards. We don't want to trip and fall and anybody trip and fall and sue the city or anything or anything that would interfere with the sewer line or, you know, any gas lines. That's another thing we do too. We plant trees only when there's space enough to have them grow. And so we're going to eliminate all those potential conflicts in the future. Will they drop a lot of litter? Well, you know, there's no such thing as a perfect tree, right? I mean, there's some that are pretty close, but, you know, leaves are not just trash. You know, leaves are an essential part of our ecosystem. And so we like to let the leaves accumulate along the base of the tree. But generally, we try to listen to the community's needs and what they desire, what they want planted. And we pick trees that aren't going to produce any nuisance fruit, nothing that's going to stain the sidewalk, nothing like liquid embers that you can roll your ankle on and break, you know? So we're also very intentional with what species we select in that regard. How much do we, water do these trees need? This is probably your biggest question, like, what does that mean? What does 15 gallons a week mean to me? What does that even look like, right? Well, how long am I sitting out there with, with my hose is what, you know, how we like to frame it. We have a bucket that we like to give residents that is about a five gallon bucket. They say, hey, you know what, fill this up three times, you know? And then once a week, just dump it in the berm that we create. The berm is kind of like a well that we have the base of the tree. And that's all it needs, you know? It's for every, every, you know, dollar that you invest in your tree over the lifespan of the tree, whether that's planting, maintaining and removing, it pays generally five to seven dollars in investment back in ecological benefits. So it's, you know, like, there's not a lot of infrastructure that has that kind of return in investment that trees do. They're wonderful machines. They're fantastic investment in the, in monetary terms as well. And who will take care of the trees? We do. We go around, we maintain them. We replace them if they're sick or the disease. We diagnose them, we repair the berms, we put the mulch in, we water every week. We have our community foresters going and checking the health of these trees until they are established enough to live on their own. And then guess what? You guys get custody of the trees. They're your trees. They're your trees from the start, but we're going to be taking care of them and babying them through that initial establishment phase, which is the most critical time for trees to become established and self-sufficient.
Yeah, and the scope of work, most of the grants that we sign that involve community forestry involve not just the planting, but the maintenance component. And the maintenance component is usually a two to four-year, you know, phase, depending on the grant that we apply for. So we usually get the planting done in like 12 to 18 months, and then we care for those trees to ensure that they survive. And our survivability rates are quite high, even throughout, you know, even throughout the pandemic, even throughout some of the hottest summers that we've experienced on record. So we're really proud of that. And that's not because of Tree People, because we don't have enough bandwidth or staff to like water all these trees. Oftentimes, it's members of the community that see a tree planted in front of their home. And before we ever plant a tree in front of somebody's parkway, that little strip of grass in front of your house, we will ask you first, do you want a tree in your parkway? Because we know that somebody that doesn't want a tree is probably not going to care for it. So it's like really ownership and agency, that's an imperative component. And some of the calls to action today, for y'all out here, come and volunteer with us. We're planting all over the place. For high school students, you get a, you know, I know that volunteer hours are a part of graduation for a lot of folks. Compel your, your high schoolers to come out with us. There, in Linwood, we had a great kickoff planting that included 50 Linwood High School students. In Watts, we helped a wonderful high school student start an eco club at her school that now has 60 students involved, and she got a scholarship to ECSD. And that eco club and generating it and starting it from the bottom up, you know, definitely played a part in getting that full ride, you know? So we're really like proud to like not just have a tree planting department, but an environmental education team that does eco tours, does workshops with schools from, you know, K through 12. So that's a large part of our work as an organization, and we'd love to collaborate on that. And so volunteering, collaborating with us, and then leadership. You know, I just kind of referenced, you know, one of our student leaders that interned with us for six months, started an eco club and is now like doing environmental work at the university level. So like this wonderful individual next to me, while having a full-time job, was a volunteer supervisor and now works for the organization. Tree People has like a rich history of like working with folks at both the intern and volunteer level and seeing folks like actually have a career pathway in this space. And seeing more folks that come from the communities that we work in, have a place at Tree People was something that was incredibly important to our, our former CEO, the late and great Cindy Montañez. I think, you know, equity, diversity and inclusion in the environmental space was something that was near and dear to her heart and is near and dear to mine. And so when we work, we work. We don't come into a community to plant and leave. We come to like, not just plant trees, but plant opportunities and work together on those opportunities. And so that's, that's what we're here today to discuss and to talk about. I know that we wanted to like limit any questions and answers, but I myself and Brian and Marcos and Eileen and the entire team at Tree People are always at your disposal. We are available and we've like, we've got great relationships with all the cities that we worked with on this tree prioritization project, and we want to grow this relationship with Montebello. And Vernon, where we don't have a grant yet, but we will, we have a hub space there. We'll actually have a permanent presence in the city of Vernon so that we can work on getting a grant for that city so that they can change that 0.6% percentage into something that's actually respectable for the workers and for the residents there. And we're going to turn this 13% into something that's a different percentage in the years to come for Montebello. And I really believe that. So thank y'all for the time and the space. And yeah, I kind of mentioned some of the, you know, the victories that we've had since the study. This is a victory, having the opportunity to present for y'all, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. We really appreciate the presentation today. You know, just a brief comment, just very excited to just be moving forward with our partnership with Tree People. This is something that this council has really been vocal about in regards to funding green initiatives, urban greenery, infrastructure. And so just very thankful for this opportunity to learn more about your services. I would love to definitely have a hub here one day and continuing the effort of planting more trees in Montebello. I look forward to meeting with your team at the end of this month to figure out how we can move forward with this really incredible partnership. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward to, give me a second here. Public comments on non-agenda items. If I can please have our city attorney read the statement of oral communications before receiving public comments.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. At this time, this is the opportunity for the public to provide comments on non-agenda items. This is a 30-minute time period for the initial speaker opportunities. Also, anyone who has requested to speak and is not part of the first 30 minutes, the council leader has the ability to continue the non-agenda public comment items or hold those speaker cards till the end of the agenda. Anyone who wishes to address the city council would have had to fill out a card prior to this time. And Mr. City Clerk, do we have requests to speak to the city council on non-agenda items?
Yes, we do have a total of 14 speaker cards. And I also do want to make a note that we did receive three speaker cards for council orals. And we will be calling them when we do get to the council orals during the agenda.
And Mayor, the time right now is 8:01, so we'll keep track of the 30-minute period.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. First speaker is going to be Denise Agopian, followed by Richard Adams.
Good evening, council. I'm here as a representative for the Montebello Rotary Club, who will be celebrating their 100-year anniversary of service to the Montebello community. People don't realize the people behind the scene who make all the things happen, delivering food baskets, raising money to buy the food for the food baskets, providing scholarships to the Montebello Unified School District, providing leadership programs for teenagers, high school age, opportunities for exchange programs, looking for grants and supporting grants. We do a police officer award a year, providing money to the police department to use as they please and also to the teachers of the Montebello Unified School District. The gentleman that we're just here is the perfect example of providing service to another organization that's coming here that's looking for people to partner with. So that is the importance of service organizations. Montebello Rotary provides almost $40,000 per year in our budget to donations to the community. People don't know this. They see turkeys get given away at Thanksgiving, they see toys, but they don't know who pulls this together. We're the behind-the-scenes help to our community. We're not the only ones. There's Alliance Clubs, there are Optimus Clubs. We need the public and you, the council, to recognize the contributions that we do and how long-term those contributions are. So I'm just going to use myself for an example. When I moved to Montebello, I was 12 years old, didn't know anything and would hang out at Taylor Ranch. And the service organization there was the Artists Community, the Southland Art Association. And they saw a kid hanging out in the park with nothing to do, and they gave me something to do. And it connected me to the city, it connected me to the Montebello Parade, it connected me to the other leaders. So we provide an opportunity for you, the council, to interact with all ages of future community leaders at our luncheon. We invite you, every Wednesday, we have a luncheon at the Quiet Cannon at 12 o'clock. It's really important for you to come and provide the recognition, number one, that people need. And I was so happy that you honored the gentleman this evening for the food distribution because he was working alongside of other Rotarians and other Lions. So that knowledge is passed and the need. Richard Adams isn't going to come tonight, so just give me a little bit more time. Our 100-year anniversary is the beginning of celebrations in the city of Montebello. Next year, the Lions Club will be hosting their 100 years. This year, the Women's Club is celebrating 100 years of their historical Women's Club building. So we have a lot of things coming forward. We really need your support to help us with sponsorships, and that money goes directly back into the community. I have some flyers, and if you could give them to everybody up here. And for the audience members, the flyer is also in the Montebello Reporter, which is outside. And I have one request for you. Somebody brought us a proclamation and somebody else said, what do we do with all these proclamations? And we have no place to display all the work that we've done and no way to communicate this to our community. You have two walls out in the entrance lobby of the City Hall Building. And I believe one wall should be dedicated to citizens of the month, and they should have their picture up there for a whole year till the next month. The second suggestion is that you dedicate some of that wall space to the service clubs. Let them maintain them and put up honorable mentions that they've received. When somebody comes into Montebello, they do not know that the backbone of the city is the service clubs. We are your hidden treasures, and we want you to know it about it and come and participate with us. When you come to one of our meetings, you'll get a lot of work done and a lot of partnership on things that you may not have known. Thank you, and thank you for the extra time.
Okay, given that Richard Adams won't be here, we'll move on to Tina Gazzar, followed by Vincent Chavez. Is Tina here? Vincent Chavez?
Yes, I'm here because I've been having, have a problem with the city trying to get our wrought iron fence replaced from last year's windy storm. So anyway, yeah, I'm here in regards to our property at 1116 and 1118 South Road Street. Because last year on April 3rd, on a Monday evening, I guess the wind outside knocked over one of the public trees and crushed our fence. And we've been trying to work with the city to try to get, take care of this matter after all this time. The only thing that came up with, we gave them the estimates and the $5,600 estimate. They say it sounds reasonable. I guess a person named Yon. Uh I guess a person named Yanni, but they say they want to pay forty-two-hundred and they want us to pay the other fourteen-hundred, which is kind of hard when we're on social security, since it, you know, the tree had fallen from the street onto our property and luckily didn't hit our houses, but, so I don't know if there's any way we can get help in this situation. We're not really sure where to go, since they want us to do that and we're not capable of paying fourteen, fourteen, you know, they want us to be part of that fifty-six-hundred and you know, we can't pay it fourteen hundred dollars. So I don't know if there's any way we can, you know, take care of this matter somehow. So I know it's a separate issue than everything else, but so I'm not really sure where I can, what we can do with that. I mean, I have, everything was right here, the police report, the estimates, so I don't know if I can get help from the city council somehow. That's why I'm here.
Um, Mr. City Manager, if we can please have one of our staff members um at the conclusion of his public comment, uh please work with him on um providing a solution for this issue.
Yes, absolutely. And then um unless you have your address written, do you mind repeating your address just for us?
Yeah, well, there's the claim form, originally I have a copy right here and estimates, you know.
So that'll suffice. We'll, we'll have staff work with you and figure something out, okay? Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Okay.
Yeah.
Next speaker is Susan Dunk, followed by Vincent Arroca. No, Susan? Very well, we'll move on with Vincent Arroca, followed by Ozzy Lopez.
Good, good evening, council. Um, thank you for having, having me here, um speak. And uh I'd just like to start off with a, a few voices of support for a couple of items, especially the uh call from Councilmember Torres regarding the resolution calling for the ceasefire in Gaza, um the Gaza Israeli conflict. So I, I support that and, and it's a good first step in terms of, um, you know, having the cities and the residents' support to, to call for an end to that conflict. Um, another thing I would like to support is the increase in funding for the expansion of the urban forestry initiatives that Mayor Peralta will bring up later. I, I support that. And uh I have a further comment about trees in general in the city I'd like to make now. Um, so I'd like to thank you for having Tree People present tonight and thank, thank you for, thank them for coming out. So as a resident, I look forward to the planning efforts uh that are being made to enhance the city's street canopy. So there's many public parkways in the city that lack vegetation and shade trees, uh which reduces the walkability and the quality of life for residents and the ability to capture and filter stormwater. So I hope uh the tree planting efforts are planned across the city, along heat impacted streets especially, um and with an equity focused approach uh with, you know, focusing on the um lower income areas and maybe apartment complexes that lack adequate shade, as well as uh near bus, bus, bus stops. So investing in street trees and getting the community involved in tree plantings, especially with Tree People, um is essential to enhancing community engagement and a greater sense of ownership of our public spaces. Uh while these plans are being developed, I hope there is careful consideration of the types of trees to be planted. Ideally, they should be suitable for the landscape while also supporting native wildlife. So native trees should be prioritized if the conditions are suitable. Uh, for example, in our parks, we can add uh oak trees and, and western sycamores, which are native to the area. Uh, for example, um, so, so these, these open spaces sustain our native birds and insects while improving our local air quality and um giving more shade in our park space and also just improving public health. So I support this part, uh this potential partnership with Tree People and an increased focus on the number of street trees in the city. Um, so I, but I, I specifically, I hope we can set some concrete goals of planting uh trees in all public parkways across the city within a reasonable timeframe, so like three to five years. So hopefully we can set targets, some concrete targets that can achieve this and with an ordinance or with a, a policy. In addition, we should develop a tree ordinance like other cities have. Um, I just have a couple more sentences, if that's okay? Okay. A tree or, tree ordinance to preserve existing mature trees on private and public land and mandate the replacement of trees if there's any planned developments that need to these trees to be cut down for any reason. Um, so the city of South Pasadena and Pasadena both have implemented robust tree ordinances to maintain their urban tree canopies and we can look to these cities as a case study and implement similar or potentially more comprehensive ordinance. Uh, so thank you.
Next speaker is Ozzy Lopez, followed by Gregory Gonzalez.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Ozzy Lopez, as you said. Uh, I represent Montebello Baseball Association. I'm here on their behalf, a volunteer, which is all of our people are volunteers as well. Um, we're working class uh citizens, we're homemakers, we are business owners um that are part of the volunteer staff of Montebello Baseball and Softball. Um, we are proud to represent Montebello. We are an organization, nonprofit organization. Um, you all have spent time with us. We thank you for the time that you've been there. We thank you for your support. Um, your support is actually going to have us tracking and getting uh with your social media posts and, and engagements of having us increase our um youth, our organization, or registrations this, this year. Uh, we're tracking about six hundred kids playing baseball with us in our parks. That's monumental and that's huge. That's having both boys and girls come out and having them, uh giving them an outlet to come and play with us. Um, what I'm here to ask for uh is to ask for additional support from all of you. Uh, and that support comes in the way of working to help improve our parks, improve our security in our parks, um and not just as uh keeping um, you know, people out of the park, but making it safe for people to be in the park. Um, we're also asking for additional park improvements, um improvements that have been spoken to us for years and years and years and years. Um, I've visited several and attended several uh meetings where they talked about, we're going to make these improvements here to each of the parks and we've seen nothing in the years that I've been with Montebello Baseball, which is about ten years now. Um, you know, I'm no longer a parent, that's a volunteer there. Uh, my kids do not play at the organization anymore. Uh, my colleague, Mr. Munoz, here as well. His son does not play anymore at Montebello Baseball, but he still supports. We're there because we have a, a uh love and passion for the game and we want to make sure our kids have an outlet to be able to come and do stuff. Um, it's great to hear the improvements that are being made. Um, David joked with me earlier about planting some trees. Let's not plant trees on the field, please. Uh, those are sacred grounds to us and we need those sacred fields as much as we possibly can. Um, but we do ask for those improvements. Um, we do ask for those fa- facilities to be updated. Our facilities are dilapidated in each park. Each park that we go to, those facilities are dilapidated. Um, you know, our snack bars, our restrooms and all those things. We have, we have restrooms, beautiful new restrooms that were built at Grant Ray Park that are out of commission and can't be used at all. Um, we need those taken care of, we need those fixed. Um, security needs to be improved. We've been broken into the last year twice. Um, and that's, they're taking stuff that belongs to our kids. When they steal from Montebello Baseball, they're not stealing from Montebello Baseball, me personally, they're stealing from the kids that we have coming in. Um, we have, as I said, we have anywhere from six hundred kids this spring, but we host about a thousand kids a year coming in. Um, some of them churn rates that we have, um, but we need those improvements. Pardon me, um, I won't take up too much more time. I know you guys have a busy agenda ahead of you. Um, but we do need to make sure that those things are improved. Um, the security needs to be improved as well. Um, we've kept our fees as best as we can to maintain them so that they're reasonably priced, that people can register. We do payment plans, we do everything possible to give back to the community. We're asking that the community gives back to us in some way, shape or form and helps us out. And not just us personally, again, it's all organizations. It's Montebello Indians, it's the soccer, AYSO Soccer, it's everyone. David does a good job of doing everything he can to help us and support us. Um, and he works with us diligently to make sure that we are, are ready for the spring and ready for, go and ready to improve these kids and bring, and improve them, but we need additional support. And so whatever you guys can do in your budget to continue to help us out, we greatly appreciate it. I've spoken to each and every one of you on a one-time basis about helping us. Now I'm here to talk to all of you guys. Um, again, um, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but again, please, whatever you guys can do to help. Um, I look forward to seeing you guys in a couple of months when we have our opening day. I will be sending out invitations to each and every one of you again to come in and visit us and attend the opening day ceremony. As you know, baseball is huge. Um, and you know, for us in our community, it brings a lot of people together in our community. It brings that family-ness, that wholesomeness. Uh Georgina, you were part of it at one point in time, so you experienced it, so you know. David, you also experienced it as well. The rest of you, I hope you guys at one point in time get to experience it some more and help us out some more. So thank you for your time, I appreciate it. Good night.
Next speaker is Gregory Gonzalez, followed by Raoul Hurtado.
Yes, if I could just please uh request that the audience and those doing public comments to just please uh try to stay within uh your, your, uh, your three minutes, just so that we can move forward with uh today's agenda items.
I will leave at the ding, I promise. Happy twenty twenty-four. Looking back at twenty twenty-three, it was the hottest year in recorded history with average global temperature of almost sixty degrees Fahrenheit. As noted in this space and tonight, uh, Montebello is especially tree poor and its residents more susceptible to the dire effects of climate change. Trees are only defense. I also support the city's potential partnership with LA Tree People and I speak for the residents in my community as well, my, my neighborhood in West Montebello. I once again call for a comprehensive tree planting program for our city, our city that is surrounded by freeways and covered in exhaust. I also urge the council to expand the budget for residential and open space tree planting, combined with education, which I expect to be proposed soon. I also support Mayor Peralta's proposal to expand the budget for planting trees, but not in centerfield. Um, around, let's have a beautiful home run area just beyond the fence. Uh, greenways that adjoin neighborhood, that adjoin resident, residential properties are city property. Residents should be advised, not be asked, that a tree will be planted on the greenway uh close to their property. I also support a tree ordinance in that effort. Please do this for health, for shade equity, and not least important, for property values. Regarding trees and plants in general, I also call upon the city to work with the Top Golf Corporation to use native plants and trees in their as-yet unplanted landscaping. Next meeting, plastic. Thank you very much for your time.
Next speaker is Raoul Hurtado, followed by Bill Polisso.
I'm not here to talk about trees. I'm here to talk about eleven, eleven twenty-three Veterans Day. Incident report, police incident report twenty-three, seven, one, two, nine. I was uh at the ceremony for the Veterans Day. You all praised the Veterans Day, the veterans. Uh, I waited patiently to talk to Hilda Solis's representative because I wanted some information to see if I could get a one-on-one with Hilda Solis. The representative told me that uh she was pretty busy and it would be months out for that, but maybe I can help you. So I started talking to her about the properties in East Los Angeles that I have and she was giving me some good information. Then along comes David with his abrasive superiority attitude. And he says, excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt. And I said, well, David, you are interrupting. He weaseled in. And I said, as he weaseled in, I says, David, you are an A S S hole. Only I didn't spell it for him. I went back to uh the representative after David finished talking to her and uh she told me that she was uh late for another meeting and she couldn't resume the conversation. So as she gave me her card, she says, give me a call later. Uh, David was with a group of people after all of you people were gone. David was there with uh two or three other four people. And as I was walking by going to my house, he yelled out, hey, Rawl! And I told him, David, you are a butthole. Then this woman, I assume she's a woman or whatever it is, I found out later from the police report that that's his girlfriend. She says to me, you're just an angry old man. I've never had words with that woman, I've never talked to her, I've never had anything to do with her and she's never talked to me. So that ticked me off. And I started saying, who in the hell are you to tell me this? Who are you? They walked in front of me and I pursued a few steps and I said, who are you to tell me this? And she says, uh, he says, David says, are you following us? And sarcastically, I said, yeah, David, I'm stalking you. So he says, I'm going to call the police. I says, go ahead, I don't care. The park director was there picking up after the, things like that, uh, from the ceremony. And he says, David, help me. I've never seen anybody so scared. Scared of an eighty-one-year-old man, a veteran. I just can't believe anybody was so scared. There was rumors that when he had a surgery, that he was wearing a poop bag. If he was wearing it that day, I'm sure he filled it up. You know, uh, they crossed my path, David came over and is holding me back. I wasn't going to get violent or nothing, I just wanted to find out who she was. And he's holding me, calm down, calm down. Now I find myself up against the good, the bad and the ugly. Anyway, pretty soon the police come.
Mr. Rawl, your time has elapsed.
Yes, I understand that. And I kind of figured you'd want to cut it because you're a friend of his.
I've asked everyone to respectfully stay within their timeframe. Thank you.
Oh, and the other people were able to, but anyway, uh, I'll come back at the next meeting and I'll con, I'll continue this and remember where I'm at. Thank you.
Next speaker is Bill Polisso, followed by Rosa Tamayo.
Good evening. Tonight I'm here again to speak about parking issues in South Montebello. And Councilman Torres, thank you very much for putting this on your council orals to address. I've been here over three times to talk about this situation and District Five Representative never did anything to address the problem, but that's pretty park because she does nothing for South Montebello. The city's municipal code ten point six eight point zero ten needs to be updated. We have people parking transportation trucks, trailers, oversized vehicles daily on city streets. We have one gentleman running a used car business. As I speak right now, he has thirteen cars parked at my neighborhood. Some of my neighbors have even gone so far to start to put out yellow cones in front of their house so they can help parking. The cars he's parking has trailers attached, has expired tags and it's just an eyesore for their neighborhood. People have even started parking their own cars in their front yards because of no street parking. Now what are even more disturbing is this man lives four blocks away from where he's parking his cars. The cars that are parked in the same spot for a week until street sweeping, then he moves them to the other side of the street or he moves them two hundred feet, as it states in the city ordinance, so you will get a ticket. The man is just taking advantage of loophole and making our neighborhoods look like trash. I'm asking all of you to please help address this problem. Bandies, trailers, oversized vehicles, commercial vehicles from being parked on city streets. And I have brought pictures for you all to see, which I will give to this young lady. And I do have one other question. And I'll present this to Mr. Alvarez and welcome to your new position and congratulations. Over a year and a half ago, we were given from the state by Senator Bobolendez, almost a million dollars for a new wrought iron fence to run on bluff road. What happened to the money? I'd just like to know that. We had a big presentation with the former mayor, he was there. So I'd like some answers. I know I asked um Councilman Torres when he was acting mayor and he just got the runaround from the past city manager. So it was given to the city? I'd like to know where the money went. That's my tax dollars. All right, thank you.
Next speaker is Rosa Tamayo.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Uh, Honorable Mayor Scarlett Peralta.
Honorable Mayor Scarlett Peralta, and member of the Consilio. I am Rosa Tamayo, activist
Councilmember Rosa Tamayo.
Comunitaria. Muchas gracias, Señora Jiménez, por los pais para las familias de más necesidad. Ellas están muy agradecidos por el día de veinticuatro de diciembre, por los pais de calabaza.
And thank you very much, Ms. Jiménez, for the parties for the most needed families.
Muchas gracias, desde la comunidad.
And thank you very much for the community.
Yo ahora tengo el problema de lasma y tengo problemas con, pues, el problema que tenemos, que no hay buena buena, buen aire. Estamos viviendo entre dos dos freeways, el sesenta y el cinco, y estamos muy contaminados. Y la verdad es que sí necesitamos muchos árboles. Y yo siempre he dicho
Miss Tamayo, for translation.
We have the sixty freeways, five freeways that are very polluted, and sure enough, we are in need of lots of trees.
Que la representación de una ciudad es, indudablemente, es los parques, porque ahí hay más área verde, árboles. Y por eso también muchos maestros.
And that's about what we said also, that without doubt, that the most better places would be the parks, and that's also why I've met many teachers.
Les dicen a los padres, lleven a sus hijos a los parques, ¿por qué? Porque es algo neurológico que hace crecer a la criatura intelectualmente.
And the teachers will tell their parents, "Take your children to the parks." It's something neurological, it helps the child to grow.
Yo lo sé porque tengo parientes que son neurólogos y son maestros, y siempre hablan de áreas verdes. El otro problema, como dijo anteriormente el señor
And I know that because I have parents who are neurologists and teachers. And like the other man said, the other problem is
Es extremadamente urgente más viviendas, porque hay mucha gente, y se los he dicho muchas veces, familias hombres anónimos. Por eso es que se miran muchos automóviles.
It's extremely urgent that there be more housing, because there's families in need, and you see a lot of automobiles.
Y lo sé porque estoy siempre metida en la comunidad, y estoy mirando a lo que impactan los personas mayores con los niños. Y no deben de vivir así los niños.
And I know this because I'm involved in the community, I see the elderly and the children, and the children should not live like this.
Y pues también el problema que no hay árboles, pero tampoco no queremos árboles verdes como el crecimiento de marihuana. No es posible en el sur de Montebello.
Yeah, there's also no trees, but neither do we want trees such as marijuana growth. We won't accept that.
Y nunca lo hemos aceptado.
And we've never accepted it.
El otro problema es que las rentas están altísimas.
The problem is that the rents are very high.
Una familia tiene que que gana el mínimo, o un poquito más del mínimo, tiene que invertir en una entrada de un apartamento, es como cuatro mil a cinco mil dólares.
A family with a very minimum, has to invest, minimum wage, just have to invest.
Y además están
Just to get in, four thousand, five thousand, besides that
Y además están haciendo construcciones muy inaceptables, como inestables, porque se parecen a las proyectos de Infonavit de México que están abandonados.
And besides that, beyond that, they're building construction, they're constructing buildings comparable to Infomit in Mexico, which look abandoned.
Aquí tenemos una pichonera como esa es Infonavit es como la construcción que hicieron en Montebello y Olympic. Esa es una, es una Infonavit de México.
Yeah, the Infomit would be like what they built on
Yo no sé cómo vive esa gente.
Beverly, that's what would be Infomit of Mexico. I don't know how to
Muchas gracias.
Live like that. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, before we go on to the next speaker, it is now eight thirty-four and the first thirty-minute time period has elapsed. It's the pleasure of the council as to whether you want to continue a public comment at this time or carry it over to the end of the agenda. And Mr. City Clerk, how many more speaker cards do we have?
We have three speaker cards remaining.
If I can ask my colleagues to just extend public comment for a little bit more, just to accommodate the three speakers.
As chair, you have the authority to do so.
Okay, so then I will go ahead and just extend public comment to include the three speakers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Can we have Olaf Levano, followed by Margot Eisner?
Hi, City Council. I want to acknowledge our Parks and Recs Department for hosting their first adaptive-inclusive recreation event past December thirteenth. It was a great event, there was a good turnout. There was a lot of families present, smiles. They were looking for future events. So this type of events, helping people with special needs, creates more inclusive community. It helps unite a community through different things. So I think David and his staff for actually taking the time to to see what the families wanted and what was the best thing to do. And it was a great event, thank you.
Next speaker is Margot Eisner, followed by Linda Nicholas.
There's somebody who was here before who wasn't here, she had to go up, so maybe she could also speak. Hello there, first of all, I'm glad it's only eight thirty, not nine thirty. Secondly, this is the first time I've ever walked in here where it's been warm, I appreciate that. And thirdly, it's great, the music that was played, the kids, that there's now girls playing brass instruments and drums, that's different. So anyway, thirdly, fourthly, the most important thing I'm here about is so wonderful to know that we're gonna be working with the Tree People. I want the entire community to be involved in all the districts. And I really wanna make sure that, as they said, native trees and da-da-dish, but also that there be connection with private property people to make sure they properly maintain their trees and don't mutilate them and da-da-da-da. There should be some way to enforce that. And also, it is less expensive than what's going on now, where they're trammed and they're, you know, we don't want our street trees all mutilated in the name of trimming. That'll save a lot of money. And that's why I wanna say that it's really important to keep and designate officially the last remaining part of what used to be the golf course as a public park, an area for natural outdoor recreation, actual outdoor recreation, in a natural environment with a lot of trees. And that would be a good place to keep enforcing that, because then otherwise, we'd have to, because of what's going on over in the namesake hills, they're flattened out, we'd have to change the name of the city to Plateau Féo. But this way, we can keep it as Montebello, which in Italian means beautiful hill. And there we have beautiful hills, right there, available to keep the name. So I hope that you will keep doing that and work together with all the people, and that you all take, you know, care of everybody in the city and take care of yourselves, and have a happy new year. And so trees are wonderful, and they can be maintained in a proper way. And I appreciate that you're gonna be doing that, and I want to participate in everything. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Linda Nicholas.
Good evening, my name is Linda Nicholas, co-founder of Match90640. My address is on file. Congrats, Madam Mayor. I never addressed Torres by that title, because he's continuously been disrespectful to employees and to residents. Would you pass that picture up to her, please? I want you to take a good look at this picture, Madam Mayor. It shows your, please show it to your supporters. That's the person with so much anger and disgust towards you because you took away his power. And that's what he was looking at you when you took the mic. And trust me when I tell you, that's not the look of an ally or somebody that you can trust. So please watch your back, because look at that picture. Pictures say a thousand words. Also, I was told we have a new director for Public Works Department that was hired. Please correct me if I'm mistaken, he does not have an engineering degree, like the former director James Enriquez did. Why is it an issue? Because now you'll have an excuse to use infrastructure engineering, which will cost us all the taxpayers millions of dollars. But since they gave you three thousand dollars for your campaigns, it's obvious why you did not hire a director with a degree, instead of a friend of a friend. Unfortunately, any plan submitted now will take over a month to get approved, because that's what they did before. Looks like you three are moving our city in the wrong direction, in reverse. I also have an article, would you send that, give that article to the city manager, please? From the Whittier Daily News, where the city of Santa Fe Springs was awarded an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar grant to help meet housing production. And who was the city manager of Santa Fe Springs? Former city manager Renee Bobodia. I mentioned the new city manager has some big shoes to fill. Let's see what you do within the month, since you just started like Renee did. I find it hypocritical that the people that were ranting and raving about Renee's salary are now quiet about the new city manager Alvarez making two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars a year for five years. At least with the former city manager, we paid for a man with thirty years of experience, numerous educational degrees, the current manager cannot match. Good luck, but please realize, we are the residents, we are not like the residents in Lynnwood or Huntington Park. We brought the state auditors to our city when we were ignored, and we won't hesitate to do it again. Thank you.
Mayor, that does conclude all speaker requests for public comment. And just a friendly reminder to all the other residents that submitted a specific speaker card for agenda item, we will be calling your name once the city council discusses those items.
Okay, moving forward with staff communications, if our city manager has any items that he would like to speak on.
Thank you, Mayor. No items to report at this time, thank you.
Okay, moving forward with regular business, we do have item seven, which is review of current council assignment to various boards, agencies, ad hoc, and task force committees. I will go ahead and I think the best way that we can go about this is we'll go, we'll go organization by organization. If I can just have my colleagues, colleagues either nominate someone or themselves, then we can go ahead and take a vote and assign and nominate, or confirm those nominations for the representative, as well as the alternate representative for each. So the first one is the San, our County of L.A.'s sanitation districts, and correct me if I'm wrong, but as mayor, I am already designated as representative. Alternate representative is up for grabs. Okay, so I will go ahead and open up nominations. If I can just go ahead, I'll go down the order, give me one second here. Okay, we have Mayor Protem Melendez.
I apologize, I missed, so we're going down the first one and just seeing if we're interested, or?
Yes, unless there's another way of going about it.
Madam Mayor, it's whatever the pleasure of the council. With respect to the sanitation district, historically, it's the mayor who serves, no, it's required by their charters that the mayor serves as the council representative. Normally, I've seen in the past, the mayor Protem serves as the alternate. However, it's certainly at the discretion of the council who you wish to designate as the alternate. So
Yeah, I would like to have the mayor Protem be the alternate for that. If there's no objection, we can just have the mayor, Mayor Protem, for that specific organization. Are we okay, no objection? And do we need to take, can we take the roll call vote at the end?
I would wait till the end.
Okay. Okay, so for County of Los Angeles Sanitation Districts, it'll be myself with Mayor Protem Melendez. Next, we have the Los Angeles County City Selection Committee. I believe that is also pre-designated for mayor, Mayor Protem, so that is finalized. We do have the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments. And so I will go ahead and just open the floor for any nominations or interest. And if there are none, I would like to nominate council member, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Melendez for that specific representative seat, if he's interested. Okay. Do I have any nominations or self-interest for an alternate of the San Gabriel Valley Cog?
Mayor, just to clarify, is this is separate from the capital improvement?
Yes. Yes. Do we have any interests for anyone to serve as the alternate for San Gabriel Valley Cog?
I'll raise my hand here.
Okay, so no other interest other than council member Torres, so we will go ahead and designate him as the alternate for Capital Projects Committee. I would like to nominate council member Torres, if there's no other council representative for that seat that is showing interest.
I would like to peek, but I'll just, if I could, I'll just say as an alternate.
Okay, no one else would like to show interest for an alternate position? So we will go ahead and have council member Torres as the representative, and then Ms. Jiménez as the alternate. For Gateway Cities Council of Governments.
I wanted, I also wanna put my name in there for the representative. I was alternate last year.
Okay, so if none of either colleague would like to withdraw, we can go ahead and move forward for a vote on that. Mr. City Clerk, may you call on a vote, the first nominee was Ms. Jiménez?
Mayor Protem Melendez. Councilmember Jiménez. Councilmember Tamayo.
No.
Councilmember Torres.
Nay.
Mayor Peralta.
No. So we have Ms., do we have to take a roll call vote for the next nomination?
Then, as I understand, that the request is to have council member Tamayo serve as the representative. Why don't we deal with that first and then go to the alternate?
Okay, so if we can please have a roll call vote, Mr. City Clerk, for Ms. Tamayo as the representative for that seat?
Yes, Mayor Protem Melendez.
Aye.
Councilmember Jiménez. Councilmember Tamayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Mayor Peralta.
Aye, so we have Ms. Tamayo as the representative. Do I have anyone showing interest for, or self, or nominating someone for the alternate for Gateway Cities Council of Governments? Ms. Jiménez, would you like to serve on that as an alternate? Okay. For Independent Cities Association, opening up the floor for interest or nominations? I will go ahead and nominate, or if there's no interest, keeping the same appointments, which is Mr. Melendez for that one, if you're willing to take it. Okay, so we'll keep Mr. Melendez as a representative for alternate. Are there any interests for an alternate? Okay, so we'll remain as Mr. Melendez for representative and Ms. Jiménez for alternate for the Montebello Chamber of Commerce, if there are any interests or self, or nominations for that seat? for that seat?
I'll stay on if there's no.
Okay, so we'll have Ms. Tamayo serving on that seat, an alternate representative, if anyone is interested.
I'd like to serve as an alternate.
Okay, so council member Torres will be the alternate for Montebello Chamber of Commerce. League of California Cities, opening that up for nominations or self, or interest?
I'm interested in Cal Cities.
Okay, if no one else is interested, okay, we can go ahead and have Mr. Torres as the representative. Any interest on alternate? I will go ahead and nominate myself or express interest for that, and if there's no objection, I can go ahead and nominate, confirm as an alternate. For, one that I did not see listed but was listed in the agenda was for the capital improvement projects. Oh, no, actually, I'm sorry, we did that already. It's a long list here. Okay, we don't need to do the Los Angeles County Vector, that's pre-designated for Mr. Avic Cordiero. And for Siaka Southeast Area Animal Control, if there is no interest from anyone, I can go ahead and, I would like to express interest but willing to open that up for anyone else. Okay, I will keep that seat, opening it up for alternate. Any interest or nominations? Okay, Ms. Jimenez, you can, will have you as an alternate. And then for Southern California Association of Governments, I will go ahead and showcase interest for that as a, as a representative. If there's no objection, if there is an alternate that is, would like to be appointed for that? Yep, okay, Mr. Melendez will be the alternate for that.
So Madam Mayor, with those designations, I would suggest or recommend that we first deal with the regional board assignments, and then we come to the ad hoc and task force assignments. So we'll be appropriate to entertain a motion to approve the representatives and the alternates as recommended and agreed upon.
Can I get a motion to approve those being appointed for the regional board assignments?
Motion to approve.
Okay, can I get a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, can I get a roll call, Mr. City Clerk?
Mayor Protem Melendez.
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Aye.
Councilmember Tamayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Mayor Peralta.
Okay, aye, and that passes with full consensus. And moving on to the ad hoc and task force, task force assignments, I will go line, one by one, and then also open it up if there is any conversation in regards to other potential ad hocs that can be added for this upcoming year. So the first one is a Shia Sister Cities Association. If we can go ahead and have a, a, any interest or nomination. Seeing none, I will go ahead and remain as a delegate for that. We do have the Stepanacert Sisters City Association. If I can have interest or a nomination for that as a delegate. Oh, the Stepanacert Sisters City Association?
The Sisters.
Yeah, okay, so Mr. Melendez will remain for that seat. We do have the Innovating Commerce Serving Communities Ad Hoc. Innovating Commerce Serving Communities Ad Hoc, I believe that's the ICSC one. I don't know if, I don't recall if that, that was mayor, Mayor Protem last year. Was it?
It was mayor.
So if, we'll go ahead and just continue that. So it'll be myself and then Mr. Melendez. We do have the Joint School District Ad Hoc. If I can have any nominations or interest?
I'd like to serve in that ad hoc.
Okay, so we have Mr. Torres. I would like to nominate Ms. Tamayo, okay? She's, no other nominations for that? So we have Mr. Torres and Ms. Tamayo for the Joint School District Ad Hoc. We do have the Street Ad, Streets Ad Hoc, and I do have a comment for that before, before moving forward with that one. But if, I'll go ahead and open it up for any, if anyone has any additional comments specifically. Okay, so I am looking to dissolve the Street Ad Hoc. I know that we had had this in the previous years and understanding that ad hocs serve for a specific period of time. I think that in the past, the Street Ad Hoc has created issues when it comes to how our community and just how our city goes about our capital improvement projects and designations of which street get fixed and which streets are added into those capital improvement projects and which streets get funding. I think there's been a lot of just comments in the past made by residents of, you know, certain council members choosing certain streets for their own benefit. And I think that to eliminate that, those types of comments, and really, I think, in the effort of creating equity when it comes to how we go about paving our streets, it should be data-driven, and it should be done in a way that our staff is able to figure out really what are the streets that need to be prioritized within our capital improvement projects and funding. So I am seeking to dissolve this as, this past year, we did work on trying to find mechanisms and really advocating for, for creating an ordinance or creating some sort of policy that goes about the, the assignment of street prioritization through a data-driven process. And so my goal is to dissolve this and have, have those mechanisms in place moving forward. If I can have any, if there's any additional comments to that, I'm more than happy to take those.
Mayor, before you take a vote, if I may add a little, a little context or background in lieu of the elimination of this ad hoc committee, one of the things that we're, we're moving towards is making this database decisions when a, and I say that in the, in the sense that moving forward, one of the things that we're striving for is to create a payment management plan that will use data, determine the need of each street, where we're able to come back, come back not only to city council for residents based on the condition of a street, this is what we can allocate, this is the amount of funding. So it's a clear and transparent process for residents where they understand, you know, what's the schedule, why are we improving this street, when is this street going to be improved based on, you know, X amount of years? And, and we're able to come back to residents and really inform them what, what are their tax dollars doing in terms of improving their streets?
Thank you so much for that additional context. If we can, if there are no additional comments, if we can go ahead and, I'll make the motion to dissolve the Street Ad Hoc Committee. And if I can get a second for that?
Second.
Okay, Mr. City Clerk, may you, or, yeah, Mr. City Clerk, may you please do roll call specifically in the dissolving of the Street Ad Hoc Committee?
Yes, Mayor Protem Melendez.
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez. Councilmember Tamayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Mayor Peralta.
Aye, and a specific ad hoc is dissolved with a consensus. Moving forward with the Washington Gold Line Coalition, if I can open that up for interest or nominations?
I'd like to serve on that.
Okay, if there are no other nominations, we can go ahead and have Mr. Torres serve on as a delegate for that. And next is the Financial Reporting Ad Hoc, if I can take nominations or interest?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to suggest that we dissolve the Financial Reporting Ad Hoc. Working alongside council member Tamayo over the last year and with Assistant City Manager Salazar and Director Solorza, we were able to achieve the goal of that ad hoc in re-establishing a monthly, in establishing monthly financial reports, which are now published online on the website, increasing the transparency of the city's spending on a month-by-month basis. I believe at this point, you know, the effort is well on the way to increase the, the visual aids that go along with the reporting numbers. And for the most part, as I mentioned, I think we've achieved the goals of this ad hoc, so I would motion to dissolve.
Okay, and just as a comment in support, I do want to just commend the Financial Ad Hoc, Reporting Ad Hoc that this last year in bringing back those monthly reports and making them accessible through our online portals and just ensuring that the, the process of transparency is there, and that is the goal that has been accomplished with that ad hoc. So I will go ahead, did you make a motion for that? I will go ahead and second that. And if we can have our city clerk provide a vote, roll call?
Mayor Protem Melendez.
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Aye.
Councilmember Tamayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Mayor Peralta.
Okay, aye. So we have a full consensus for dissolving that ad hoc. Now, I would like to open up the floor if there are any interest from my colleagues in potentially having any other ad hocs that might, they would like to suggest for this upcoming year.
Mayor, I'd like to have an ad hoc for, I think our city manager has talked about this before or talked about in our strategic session with Adventist and White Memorial, to have an ad hoc committee to at least be able to meet with the staff and, you know, and have the input of the, of the city when we, staff as they developed the land around it as Adventist comes to our community, as they continue to grow the operation. So I'd like to also serve on that committee, so, yeah, if I can get the support and any of my colleagues are, that are interested in serving as well. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a really incredible idea as far as bringing in that ad hoc Adventist Health White Memorial coming in and, you know, really saving our hospital is great news, and being able to become a partner and working with them closely moving forward through those initiatives of how we begin to reimagine that space is going to be important. So do we need to create a motion to create an ad hoc?
Yes, I would suggest.
Okay.
Entertaining that motion.
Would, would you like to motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, can I get a second?
Okay.
Okay, we got a second, a motion by Mr. Melendez, a second by Ms. Jimenez. Mr. City Clerk, may you please take roll?
Mayor Protem Melendez.
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Aye.
Councilmember Tamayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Mayor Peralta.
Aye, and so we, Mr. Melendez did showcase, showcase interest for that appointment. I don't know if this is a two-member, a two-member ad hoc or a one-member ad hoc, Mr.?
I would suggest appointing an alternate from the city council.
Okay, if I can open it up for interest or nominations?
I'm also interested.
Okay, so we do have two nominations. If no one withdraws, we can go ahead and take a vote. The first, the first nomination was Mr. Torres. Mr. City Clerk, if we could please have a roll?
Yes, Mayor Protem Melendez.
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Aye.
Councilmember Tamayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Mayor Peralta.
Aye, so that, there is a consensus to have Mr. Melendez.
Just for clarification, Mayor, would that be an alternate or a second member to that ad hoc?
I would say second, yeah.
Both members, yeah.
Okay, so we have two members serving in the new Adventist Health White Memorial Ad Hoc, and that will be Mr. Mayor Protem Melendez and Councilmember Torres.
If I may add, thank you, Mayor Protem, for making that motion and creating this ad hoc committee. One of our goals in the future is to come back to the city council with a defined scope of work. When, we're working collectively with the representatives on the hospital, as many, you know, they, they acquired the hospital last year, but that doesn't mean that everything has been complete, there's been a, they're still in transition in terms of us figuring out the logistics, the conversations we've been having with them regularly, is that there is a need for us to have a, not only a collective voice with city council, but with them, and also having residents kind of be a part of this process. So at a future meeting, we want to come back with a defined collective scope of work, not just from the perspective of the city council, but for representatives of the hospital. And then, you know, basically, create a mechanism that by which the residents and us, we're able to relay exactly the status of the hospital, where the quality of the services, what's going to be kept, what's not going to be kept, all that good stuff. But, but stay tuned, we'll be bringing that information back to the residents. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. City Manager. And then, again, just opening it up as far as any other ad hocs that my colleagues are interested in creating for this year. Looking around, no.
Mayor, if since there's no additional ad hocs to be considered, I would recommend that the council consider a motion to approve or confirm, I should say, all of the appointments that have been announced.
Okay, can I please receive a motion to approve all the appointments announced in the ad hoc and task force assignments?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Melendez, can I get a second?
I second.
A second by Ms. Tamayo. Mr. City Clerk, may you please do roll call?
Yes, Mayor Protem Melendez.
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Aye.
Councilmember Tamayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Mayor Peralta.
And I vote aye, that passes with consensus. And moving forward, give me one second, we are now.
Item number eight.
Okay, so we have item number eight, which is an adoption of urgency ordinance number 2472, an introduction and first reading of ordinance number 2473, amending chapter 2.44 Traffic and Safety Commission of the Montebello Municipal Code to update and define the roles, duties, and responsibilities of commission members.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and present this item.
Okay.
Council members, as you may, may be aware, ordinance number 2322 was passed in, in 2008, they created various commissions throughout the city, and amongst those was the Traffic and Safety Commission. Most recently, city council took action on January 13, 2021, relative to, to adopting an ordinance amending a chapter 2.44 of the City of Montebello Municipal Code to then existing Traffic and Safety Commission, and transforming it into a Traffic and Safety Committee, which changes the procedures and membership of the committee. Subsequently, city council at the meeting of, of March 2023, adopted an ordinance to reinstate the Traffic and Safety Commission to its full form as it previously was before, and amended, and amendment on January 13, 2021. The ordinance reverted the Traffic Committee back to a Traffic and Safety Commission as it once was, made up of five members of the public, with each member being appointed by the city council. As it stands, the purpose of the Traffic and Safety Commission is, is to consider matters of traffic and safety within the city, evaluate proposals for traffic control devices, evaluate the need for striping, signage, or other measures not of regulatory nature, educate the public on traffic issues, and respond to public concerns regarding traffic and pedestrian safety. As, as we could, as we did an analysis of the Traffic Commission in preparation for the first meeting later this month, one of the things that we, we determined is that as it read, or the scope of work in terms of the duties for the commissioners, may be in conflict with the duties of the city council, in addition, may be in conflict with our CIP process and, and our procurement process, and also our spending authority that's delegated to the city council by the voters of the City of Montebello. For this reason, we are proposing some changes to the Traffic Commission under an urgency ordinance, which would require for a four-fifths vote. Some of the key points that should be considered by the city council, or the main points of the changes that will be made, are designating the following city officers and employees or their deputies to participate in meetings. The city manager, the community development director, a city engineer, police chief, and the city attorney. Additionally, the new ordinance, or the change to the ordinance will clearly define the powers and duties of the commissioners, including but not limited to items relating to traffic control devices, traffic and pedestrian safety zones, and signage and striping. Additionally, standards for exercising the above powers and duties will be defined more clearly. Temporary powers and duties of the chief of police, for emergencies, will not be changed. They will be, they will be further clarified under this commission. Additionally, language pertaining to work orders, or signage markings, or devices, and the procedures will remain the same. Recommendations for capital improvement projects related to traffic related to traffic matters for the city will be forwarded to the city council under our normal process as a city. As mentioned, this ordinance will require a four-fifths vote. Should the city council not decide to approve this ordinance, we did include, which is customary, an ordinance, a regular ordinance, which would go through a normal process of a first and second reading, again, if the council does not wish to make that change. I want to read for the record the recommendations that we're making to the city council. Before doing that, I do have two clarification points, which are written in the ordinance. One is just a date, Kimberly, City Clerk's office, basically, there needs to be a change. There is a date that says from 2020 to 2021, and we're citing information. No, I'm sorry, it says 2020 to 2020. It should read from 2020 to 2021 pertaining to the statistics that we use for this commission. Additionally, I want to make a change while we are, while the current language just say "city engineer," I want to change it to state the public works director or city engineer as the representatives on the commission. So the recommendation to the city council is first, adopt an urgency ordinance amending chapter 2.44, Traffic and Safety Commission of the Montebello Municipal Code to update and define the roles, duties, and responsibilities of the commission and its members, introduce and conduct a first reading with waiver of full reading of an ordinance amending chapter 2.44, Traffic and Safety Commission of the Montebello Municipal Code to update and define the roles, duties, and responsibilities of the commissioners, and provide direction to bring the ordinance back for a second reading and adoption at the next regular meeting, and take such additional related action that may be desirable. I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns the council may have.
Okay, I'll go down the row for questions or comments. We have Mayor Portem Melendez. Any questions or comments?
No questions.
Okay, Councilmember Tamayo? I'm so sorry, Councilmember Jimenez? Okay, Councilmember Tamayo?
No questions, but I do have a comment, but I can wait to see, but I would like to just be able to walk through the process of how a resident would be able to bring an issue to this Traffic and Safety Commission. But that would be, once it's established.
Well, the process that will be defined for the Traffic and Safety Commission, it's very similar to what you're seeing right now in this room. It will be subject to Brown Act regulations, so, and similarly, we will have a public comment period. So the agendas will be posted within 72 hours, so residents are informed of the meeting. And additionally, we will welcome public comments as far as them coming in and letting us know what their concerns. So that would be the normal process, similar to what you see here.
Councilmember Torres?
No questions. I just want to say that I'm very much looking forward to the Traffic and Safety Commission starting to take action on the concerns that residents have as they pertain to the issues that are on our streets and at the end of their driveway. So I appreciate the work to clarify things as to their duties, powers, roles, responsibilities, to make sure that that's as efficient as possible and to clarify a lot of the mysteries that surround how residents can go about, you know, things whether they be safety, speeding, parking, et cetera.
Mayor, I just have one question.
Yes.
City Manager, why is, if you can just, maybe I missed it, but clarify, why is it based, why didn't emergency ordinance instead of a regular ordinance?
So this is my recommendation. Because the Traffic Safety Commission has not been, hasn't met since last year, we're starting a new year, I want to make sure that we don't delay any further the work of not only the commissioners, but ensuring that we provide results to the residents in terms of their traffic concerns that we have in our queue. So for this reason, I'm recommending that we pass it now, so we're able to fully operate the traffic commission later this month at the first meeting.
Okay, and then for my just general statement, I do just want to thank our city manager, as well as our staff and legal team in drafting this urgency ordinance. It's been a really big priority for myself and my colleagues here in making sure that we reinstate our commission, Traffic and Safety Commission. This is a commission that really deals with pedestrian safety and the safety of our neighborhoods and our residents. I think for a very long time now, those issues have not have, we have not provided a real avenue to address. The commission unfortunately has not met, and a lot of that has been because of staff capacity and just restrictions. And so being able to have this urgency ordinance adopted prior to the meeting, their first meeting at the end of this month, I think is extremely important to be able to define the roles and responsibilities and ensure that there is clarity and no confusion when it comes to how we go about addressing things like calming safety devices on our streets and ensuring that our residents have an opportunity to provide their grievances and issues when it comes to creating safer neighborhoods. And so this ordinance will allow us to be able to provide that clarity and define those roles prior to that meeting, a very expected meeting coming at the end of this month. And so if I can go ahead and just ask for a motion?
Sorry, Mayor. Madam Mayor, I would request that we take two different actions. One to consider and adopt the urgency ordinance, and then after that vote, then move on to the regular ordinance. And again, as indicated, we're doing that just out of an abundance of caution. So the motion would be appropriate to consider adopting urgency ordinance number 2472, amending chapter 2.44, Traffic and Safety Commission of the Montebello Municipal Code to update and define the roles, duties, and responsibilities of the commission members, and to waive further reading of that ordinance.
Can I get a motion?
Mayor, sorry, apologies. Before we move on to, we did have one speaker card for this item. Would you like us to call them up before?
Yes, please, apologies.
So we had just one, Mr. Vincent LaRoca for agenda item eight.
Thank you. Given that this is an urgency ordinance and you require four fifths of vote, I just want to voice my support for this, so that all council can approve this. With an amendment, it's a kind of a question, because I was reading the agenda packet, and the word "safety" was crossed out. So can you just clarify, is that the case, or was I misreading that?
The ordinance, the language or the?
The language and the ordinance, they crossed out "safety" from the commission's name. Is that true, or did I misread that?
Mayor, maybe, let me get the city attorney's office for that.
Stepping up to the microphone is Navarro Duke Magian. She's, excuse me, sir, can I have you step one step over? Thank you. She has been the one from our office working with Raul, with their city manager, to craft the ordinance. So Navarro, do you have an answer to the question?
Thank you, yes. Mayor, members of the city council. I believe he's referring, the gentleman here is referring to the abbreviation that we use throughout the ordinance. If you see in the beginning, it refers to the commission as a Traffic and Safety Commission, and then in parentheses and quotations, it'll say "traffic committee" or "commission," just to keep the name a little shorter throughout the ordinance, so it's not too long. But it is the Traffic and Safety Commission. It's a formal name. Thank you.
Mr. LaRoca, I would also add that safety is a big component of this commission. You can see the makeup of this commission. Each of the key departments that deals with traffic and safety, public matters, is included, not only myself, but the chief of police or is designated. A lot of these issues are layered, and they're just not related to public works or just community development. They have various aspects. So there will be a representative from public safety there that will help address some of those concerns, and collectively, we're hoping to kind of help you make those decisions.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. I just wanted to be completely sure, because, you know, I was appointed as a commissioner, and my utmost concern is safety. So, you know, I'm gonna, that's my number one concern for residents, and that precedes the convenience of drivers, that precedes the convenience of anybody. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. And with regards to the traffic commission as well, and I think it also applies to other commissions in general, I think that there should be community input that through means such as virtual Zoom participation or other platform. I know a lot of other cities have commissions that people can participate through web conferencing. So hopefully, we can invest in that, so we can get more participation, because there's a lot of voices that we don't hear, a lot of parents that we don't hear that have children at home, a lot of people that, you know, work night shifts, and we don't hear their voices because they don't have that three minutes to come here and speak their words. So I hope that in a separate, maybe in a separate ordinance, we can add the ability to do web conferencing for other commissions and also the city council meetings. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dela Roca. And with that, if there are no additional comments from my colleagues, can I please receive?
This is for the urgency ordinance adoption.
A motion to adopt the urgency ordinance number 2472?
Motion.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a first and a second by Councilmember Torres and Tamayo. Mr. City Clerk, may you please call, take roll?
Yes, Mayor Portem Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez? Councilmember Tamayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Peralta?
Aye, and that is four ayes and one no.
The next motion appropriate, Madam Mayor, is to consider the introduction and conduct first reading with a waiver of the full reading of ordinance number 2473, which amends chapter 2.44 of the Traffic and Safety Commission of the Montebello Municipal Code to update and define the roles, duties, and responsibilities of the commission members, and also to provide direction to bring the ordinance back for a second reading and adoption at the next regularly city council meeting. Be appropriate to entertain a motion to that effect.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Torres. Can I get a second? I will go ahead and second. Mr. City Clerk, can I please get roll call?
Mayor Portem Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez? Councilmember Tamayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Peralta?
Aye, and that second part passes with a consensus. And now, moving on to item number nine, first reading and introduction of ordinance number 2471, amending municipal code chapter 12.24, conduct in public parks. If, I'll go ahead and just look to my colleagues if they have any questions that staff can answer. Questions? Okay. Mr. City Manager, are there any additional information you'd like to provide?
Not at this time.
Okay, can I please go ahead and get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Can I please get a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Torres and a second by Mayor Portem Melendez. Mr. City Clerk, may I please, can you please take roll?
Mayor Portem Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez? Councilmember Tamayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Peralta?
Okay, sorry, aye. And item nine passes with full consensus. Moving on to consent calendar, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Madam Mayor, before we move forward with consent, we also do have some business to address under the successor agency meeting. Tonight, the city council convened, both as the city council and also in your roles as members to the successor agency. There is one item that's on your agenda for the successor agency, and this is the consideration to adopt the successor agency resolutions number 24-01 and 24-02, which would approve fiscal year 2024 through 2025 recognized obligation payment schedules, the ROPS for 2024, 25. The report has been presented by the finance director, who is also available for any questions the council may have. The recommendation is to approve those resolutions and adopt the ROPS.
Okay, thank you so much for catching that, Mr. City Attorney. I'll go ahead and look to my colleagues to see if they have any questions on this item. No questions. I will go ahead and ask for a motion?
Motion.
Okay, motion to approve by Councilmember Torres. Can I get a second?
I second.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Tamayo. Mr. City Clerk, may you please take roll?
Mayor Portem Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez? Councilmember Tamayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Peralta?
Aye, and item one in the successor agency agenda passes with full consensus.
And just for purposes of making sure the record's clear, Mr. Secretary to the successor agency, were there any speaker cards requested to address the successor agency?
We have none.
Okay, thank you. Then, Madam Chairperson, it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to adjourn the successor agency at this time.
Okay, so I will go ahead and take a motion to adjourn the city council and successor.
I'll make the motion.
The city council, the successor agency.
I motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Tamayo. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, second, and we adjourn the successor agency portion of our meeting tonight. Moving forward with consent, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This now is the time for the city council, the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine. Any item a member wishes to discuss, including any item the public submitted speaker cards for, should be designated at this time. All other items may be approved in a single motion. Such approval will also waive the reading of the ordinance. We have items number 10 through 20 on the consent agenda. I think it'd be appropriate first to inquire, is there any speaker cards on those items, Mr. City Clerk?
No speaker cards for consent calendar.
Okay, thank you. Then if I may poll the council, Madam Mayor, starting with Mayor Portem Melendez, items 10 through 20.
No items.
Councilmember Jimenez? Councilmember Tamayo?
No items.
Councilmember Torres?
No items.
And Mayor Peralta?
Okay, no items. So if I can please ask, sorry, receive a motion to approve items 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion by Mayor Portem Melendez. Can I get a second?
Sec.
Okay, second by Councilmember Jimenez. Can I please go ahead and get a roll call, Mr. City Clerk?
Mayor Portem Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez? Councilmember Tamayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Peralta?
Aye, consent items 10 to 20, pass with a consensus. Moving forward now to AB 1234, travel reports. I do have a report, but I will go ahead and go down the line from my colleagues to see if they have a, or I don't have the line in front of me right now. I'll just look to my colleagues to see if they have any reporting. Okay?
Thank you. Just wanted to report that this week, I attended the Contract Cities Legislative Tour in Sacramento. It's a yearly advocacy day conference that Contract Cities has early in the year to kind of set our priorities and the issues that local governments are facing with the state. Just kind of two big things I want to point out that was part of the discussion. As we all know, today, the governor released his, the first process of the budget with a $40 billion or $39. something billion dollars in the deficit. Part of the conversation that we had with some of the state legislators is that unfortunately, this might not be the only year that we're gonna have, and we're gonna be under the deficit. It's probably gonna be the next couple of years. And what I found interesting is that a large portion of this is based on the personal income tax and corporate tax that's not coming into the state, which means that a lot of corporations and wealthy individuals are leaving the state. So we're not, we're not getting enough, enough of that personal tax. So in essence, it's not really going to impact our communities just yet, because most of the money that we receive, it's through sales tax and property tax. However, in the next few years, if this doesn't correct itself, we're gonna start seeing, we're gonna start seeing it more in our local government. So I found it interesting that, you know, the impact that folks leaving the state are having, are having here, are having with the budget. The second issue that is one of the top priorities for Contract Cities and a lot of our surrounding municipalities is the issue of retail theft that we've been experiencing in our communities. So I joined and represented the city of Montebello with several other cities at the state capitol to bring awareness to this issue that's impacting our communities, large businesses, small businesses. And the priority is four key issues that we're gonna concentrate in order to combat the retail theft that's happening in our in order to combat the retail theft that's happening in a lot of our communities. One is we're gonna base our decision on data, so the ask is that when we present this information over to the state legislators, that we have concrete data of the theft that's happening here. And all the information that we can give them and paint the picture that this is happening in our communities is gonna be extremely beneficial. I would like to also state that the data does show that a small number are the ones that are actually responsible for a large number of the retail crimes. So it's not complete anarchy, it's a concentrated effort by some folks that continue to do this over and over. So that's number two. And the number three is strength, loss, and consequences for repeat offenders. Right now, there's really no consequences, and we continue to see this, and that's why folks keep doing the same thing over and over and over. And the number four thing that we're gonna concentrate on is shutting down the distribution channels for the stolen goods. So yeah, those were some of the key areas in, that was part of Contract Cities. I know there were some articles written about this, and I'll probably share with all of you, so maybe City Montebello can participate a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem Melendez, for attending. I'll be having counsel in bringing in that additional context as far as how local cities can begin combat, on combating retail crime and theft. For AB twelve thirty four, I would like to report, Councilmember, or it was at the time that Councilmember Torres was serving as mayor, I as Mayor Protem, as well as our city manager and assistant city manager did attend a one-day trip to Santana Row with Adventist Health Memorial to look at the development that is Santana Row in this opportunity of being able to reimagine the space that is Beverly Hospital. It was very important for us to be able to see the opportunities as far as how we can begin being a partner with Adventist when it comes to ensuring that we're advocating that the space be utilized in a way that is also beneficial to our residents beyond medical use. Just kind of, just like the Los Angeles General Hospital and their vision of workforce development, housing, and retail. This was an opportunity for us to be able to not only take a trip and be able to see what others areas are doing, but also have this opportunity to discuss what our priorities are as far as the city of Montebello. And we really do thank Adventist Health as far as White Memorial, Montebello, as far as having this opportunity to really collaborate closely and being able to work together as far as their future master plan for this area. I want to ensure that moving forward, we continue this collaboration, and thank you, Mayor Protem Melendez, for the suggestion of the ad hoc in terms of how we envision that Montebello location of our hospital and ensuring that we do bring in workforce development, housing, retail, and an opportunity for our residents to be able to use that space as well. Do I have any other comments or reports?
Mayor, as you mentioned, I also attended the trip to Santana Row, and I think you summarized the purpose and what was accomplished perfectly. Thank you.
Thank you. So moving forward, we do have council agency orals. We do have three speaker cards for council orals for Councilmember Torres's items. If we can go ahead and have the speakers come up prior to our orals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. First speaker is gonna be Raoul Hurtado, followed by Reida Hamida.
Yes, on item number four for Mr. Torres, I just want to know who died and made him the president of the United Nations? We went through this with Trump when he was president. You were elected for Montebello. Not for the Middle East, not for any presidential candidate, you were elected for Montebello. Do the job for Montebello, stop this crap. First of all, you said a resolution calling for a ceasefire in Gaza-Israel conflict. Gaza is a strip of land. Israel is fighting Hamas, who is a terrorist organization. Get your facts straight.
Next speaker is Reida, followed by Alex Rocha.
That's a tough act to follow. My name is Reida Hamida. I am a proud Palestinian, and I have served the city of Montebello for six years when I worked for an assembly member, Christina Garcia, alongside with many of you, Angie, Sal, David. I am proud to say I worked with David Sosnowski for many years, organizing your movie nights, making sure that families were fed. Thousands and hundreds and thousands of people were fed by those events that I led alongside with David. And so as a Palestinian, I also ask that you recognize the humanitarian call for a ceasefire in, in a time where there's a lot of politics that are getting involved in the way of ending genocide. And I would ask that you be on the right side of history, not to be afraid because silence is complicity in genocide. We have a long history of Armenian genocide advocacy for recognition here in this city. And I personally got married in the city of Montebello in nineteen ninety nine. I have a history of family that lives in Monterey Park and Montebello, so Palestinians reside in your city. And they will be here next council meeting to share their stories. But myself, my family, they are in the West Bank, and they're holding their breath, they're rationing. They do not have food, they're not allowing even food into our village. There's everyday raids. There's electricity that is turned off. I don't know if anybody would even be fighting against calling for the city of Montebello to call for a ceasefire if they lived one day as a Palestinian while not having electricity, not having water, not having access to roads, not having access to mobilization, even leaving Gaza. They can't even leave Gaza. There are Palestinians that have lived in Gaza all their lives and never seen Jerusalem, which is thirty minutes away. So this is seventy-five years of occupation. This did not happen just in October seventh. And there has been more than thirty thousand people that are Palestinian people. They are not less than human. I am not less than human, and I ask that you stand with members of Congress like Robert Garcia that did call for a ceasefire because it is our tax dollars are funding this genocide. And so we urge you in solidarity with Palestinians and all people, the liberation of all people, to call for a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Alex Rocha.
Okay, well firstly, I'm glad you guys are gonna work with tree people. I had the privilege of working with them for the past three years in my capacity as a city planner, the city of commerce, until I had to leave in summer of twenty twenty-three. So, great people. I graduated from Shore High School in two thousand eight. I grew up on Garfield Olympic, in a corporate district LA, right next to Montebello. I had a wonderful childhood, and all I want for the children of Palestine are to have a, the surviving children of Palestine have a shot at life, to physically survive and hopefully mentally be okay. I'm not sure, have to recount to you the horrors, but I think I will, because I'm not sure sometimes if we're even on the same internet. Intestines and brain matter spilling out of children, twisted limbs, severely burned and peeling skin, decomposing bodies, crying children who have not yet realized that they're orphaned, fathers carrying their children's body parts in bags, mothers struggling to say goodbye to their dead children. I'm not sure if many of you realize that Gaza is now completely uninhabitable. It's been deemed uninhabitable. Infrastructure shot, roads shot, utilities. I think about seventy percent of hospitals are just gone or out of commission. No schools, mosques, doctors are dead. Half of people were unemployed even before October seventh. So what now? And we're all implicated in this. We've donated hundreds of billions of dollars since World War Two. Our neighbors in Pico Rivera benefit, Northrop Grumman, they, they benefit. They manufacture weapons there. And I, I hope you choose to defend basic human rights. I can't believe I have to take time away from my one-year-old to be here to convince you all that committing war crimes and blowing up citizens and children is wrong. These images will never leave my mind, and my, my generation and the next will never forget the, these images, and will never forget those of you who chose to stay silent or worse, defend Israel. Torres, thank you very much for bringing this up, and I'm here if you need anything. I'm actually the one who shared your post in my story earlier today that I was gonna be here, so, and I think that's it. Thank you.
So thank you very much to those commenters who came out this evening and have waited the last three hours and forty-five minutes to, to speak on this very important issue. I think it just goes to show how significant it is taking this much time out of your evening for those three minutes this late in the evening. And before I go to my written statement, I'd like to just mention something. As we go to Black History Month and Martin Luther King Day next month, there's something that you see all across social media, people say it in speeches. Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. That's something that I think is significant, and I think will start to answer at least one of the questions this evening. On January twelfth, nineteen sixty-seven, almost exactly fifty-seven years ago to the day, a brave council in these chambers approved plans to establish the first monument to the Armenian genocide on public property outside of Armenia. A move which officially recognized the human rights violations and atrocities faced fifty-five years before by the Armenian people. In doing so, they overcame threats of violence against the city, supported, supported those here in the states that suffered from those atrocities, and created an example for future councils to live up to. Over my four years in office, I've understood their courageous action, recognizing crimes against humanity and human rights violations as our city's heritage and the duty of the city council. In twenty nineteen, I led a peaceful protest here on the steps of City Hall against the inhumane treatment of migrants in ICE detention centers. In twenty twenty-one, I put forward a resolution unanimously approved by this council, recognizing art stocks rights of self-determination against aggression by Azerbaijan, and today, I'm asking my colleagues to come together and calling for the preservation of life and human dignity in Gaza, where millions of civilians are threatened with famine, war, and death. On October seventh, twenty twenty-three, Hamas launched a violent and deadly attack on Israel. Hamas militants invaded by land and air indiscriminately killing civilians and settlements along the Gaza Strip. It's estimated twelve hundred people were killed in the assault and two hundred and forty hostages seized. Rockets were launched into Israel against civilian targets. I've watched some of the footage published by the Israeli Defense Force. It is chilling. Every sovereign nation so situated would be expected to resolve, respond to the violation of their borders and murder of their people with force and resolve. However, since that time, Israel has delivered an outsized response. Over twenty-three Palestinians have been killed since the start of the conflict, one percent of the entire population of Gaza, one in every one hundred inhabitants. Another sixty thousand have been wounded. These numbers do not discriminate between combatants and civilians. The United Nations estimates forty percent of casualties are children. It includes over fifty journalists and media workers, accounting for seventy-three percent of all journalists and media workers killed across the globe in twenty twenty-three. In one statement by the Israeli Defense Force, two-thirds of those killed have been civilians. And look, war is terrible. Innocent people get caught in the crossfire. Civilian casualties are an unfortunate byproduct of combat in urban environments. But for those that haven't kept up with the developments in the region, Gaza is being utterly destroyed. Israel started by restricting water and electricity to the region, affecting militants and civilian populations alike, constituting a war crime known as collective punishment. An unstable food supply has put over half million people at catastrophic or starvation levels, and all two million inhabitants in a food crisis. One point seven million displaced people are registered in shelters in the south, including people who can't fit in their walls and sleep on the roads and open spaces. Overcrowding in shelters mean that in some cases, five hundred people share a single toilet. And an investigation by the New York Times showed Israel dropped bombs where it ordered Gaza civilians to go. I encourage my colleagues and our residents to look at Motaz Azaisa, a Palestinian photojournalist from the Gaza Strip, who shares his firsthand accounts of the war daily. Watch as families travel devastated streets, taking only what they can carry. Two thousand pound bombs taking out entire blocks of apartment buildings. Children no more than two or three years old shaking from shelling and bombardment. What action is being requested tonight, and then bringing a resolution to vote? I'm asking my colleagues to join over a hundred and fifty countries and sixty-one percent of likely voters in calling for a ceasefire and de-escalation of violence in Gaza by drafting and voting on a resolution to such effect, and further to send this resolution to our congressional representatives in the House and Senate and the President of the United States. I ask my colleagues to speak in favor of aid to address a developing humanitarian crisis, for the immediate release of all hostages taken by Hamas, and for the cessation of hostilities by both sides. I ask my colleagues to recognize this conflict as a developing global crisis with implications beyond the current war zone, and to ensure Montebello stands on the side of a peaceful resolution. And so, Madam Mayor, this evening, I am asking for council consensus to work with staff to draft a resolution and bring it back at the next meeting for a vote.
Okay, Mr. City Clerk, if I please, can get roll call?
Yes, Mayor Protem Melendez.
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Aye, but before I, we continue, I do want to share something. I was talking to Reida earlier, and I let her know that my oldest daughter, Ruby, who goes to a private school, was asked to do the reflection prayer for their Thanksgiving breakfast back in November. And she asked me to buy her a kaffiyah because she wanted a word in solidarity. She did get in trouble. They did ask her to remove it, but they, they did let her place it on her lap as she read the reflection prayer. I, along with one of my girlfriends and our children, marched in the streets of LA, and I believe Reida was one of the organizers for that march on December second before the tree lighting ceremony here in front of City Hall. While we do respect the, the views of everyone, this that is happening on the other side of the world is, is shouldn't something that we should be turning a blind, a blind eye to. It's something that we should all stand in solidarity with, whether we agree and disagree on our streets, our trees, or anything else around and across the world. This is something that we, we should all be asking for, so in honor of my children, and my children who have taught me so much, who have asked me repeatedly to reject the Starbucks gift cards from the holidays, from their birthdays, the McDonald's gift cards. They've asked me personally not to pay my taxes here. I, I am glad and honored that our city is deciding to do this because, again, every child that's been lost and whose life has been claimed by this just growth, it's gross, everything that's happening. In their honor and the spirit of these children's and their, and the opportunity that they didn't have, I, I vote aye, absolutely, and call for a ceasefire.
Councilmember Tamayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Mayor Penalto.
Aye, and that passes with full consensus and very proudly. Thank you.
And thank you to my colleagues for taking that first very brave step. Next, I'd like to go to my request for council consensus to allocate funds for the purchase and installation of drug disposal bins at the police and fire departments. I'd also kind of like to expand this a little bit. In my post on my council orals, it came to my attention that there are also families with diabetics that have difficulty finding a place to dispose of or exchange the needles that they use on, on sometimes a daily basis. So I would like this oral to include that as well. But basically, this this oral to include that as well. But basically, this came out of a need that I saw in my own family. After the passing of my mother and, and dealing with the medication that she had been prescribed and not used, it was very difficult to find a place to dispose of. The long-term care workers at Kaiser directed us to our police and fire departments. When we approached them, they said, we don't have anything here. And so, you know, for a family like mine that has been highly involved in local governance, very resourceful in the ways that we go about just, you know, our, our daily lives, and having the difficulty, difficulty that we had, I can't imagine what it's like for families that don't have the same kind of resources and time, that receive the same directions from, from hospital workers, only to find that there is no opportunity to safely and properly dispose of medication as opposed to throwing it away, flushing it down the toilet to where it can pollute our water systems. And so this evening, I am asking for a council consensus to allocate funds for the purchase and installation of drug disposal bins at the police and fire departments. Along with that, I would also like to, and in some ways before this, explore just like what some of the regulatory requirements are, just in terms of either lighting or safety or monitoring, what kinds of certifications that are required by the DEA to be able to receive such items, and that goes both for drug disposal bins and the, the needle disposal as well. So I would ask for a motion to approve to that effect, Madam Mayor. And also happy to take any questions or comments from my colleagues.
No questions or comments at this time. Mr. City Clerk, may you please do roll call?
Mayor Portemalindes?
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Tomayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Penalto?
Aye.
Thank you, colleagues, for your support on that item. Next is requesting consensus directing staff to create an ordinance establishing a registry of vacant spaces and mechanisms to promote, promote their maintenance. On this item, I would like to expand and clarify ordinance 2329, which relates very similarly to the requests here. There are elements that I think that are missing. I think in terms of enforcement, giving our code enforcement department additional tools to be able to like really identify properties that are using resources, falling behind on codes, and, and making, and also giving them the tools to register those properties, even if they're not affirmatively, affirmatively registered by the owner, are some of the things that I would like to explore along with staff. So this evening, requesting council consensus to be able to work with staff to develop that language and come back with an ordinance to make our provisions more robust. So a lot of these blinded properties and empty properties become sales tax-producing, revenue-producing properties that our residents can enjoy and be proud of.
Councilmember, I have a question, a clarification in terms of the, the request. Thank you for mentioning that there is an existing ordinance that deals with vacant properties. And, and thank you for mentioning that it, there is some improvement. There's things that are lacking in there, but because we do have an existing ordinance with an existing process, are you requesting a, a separate ordinance or working within the existing ordinance, adding, adding those elements that are missing? The only reason I would, I would advocate for working within the existing ordinance because we have already a built-in process by which the vacant property owners have to annually report their vacant properties to the community development department. So it's already tracked, we have our process is internal. So I would consider this like making any change or any addition to an existing ordinance, working within that process, and obviously incorporating specifically the, the elements that you feel are missing. But we're happy to work towards that. Just, I just wanted to get that clarification in terms of you're looking for a completely new ordinance or working with the existing ordinance in, in our books?
I, I think generally asking counts for the ability to have that discussion.
Sure, okay.
To make sure that whatever is being created is appropriate. So it could be both, could be one or the other, but I think an initial thought, it's expanding and clarifying, clarifying the existing one.
Okay. So, so we're happy, you know, to talk about it and figure it out, and then report back.
Thank you very much.
There are no additional comments. Mr. City Clerk, may you please do roll call?
Mayor Portemalindes?
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Tomayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Penalto?
Aye.
Thank you very much to my colleagues for support there. And lastly, is request for council consensus directing staff to create an ordinance to regulate the parking of oversized and commercial vehicles and unattached trailers. As we heard earlier this evening from Mr. Palisso, this is an issue that has been ongoing in his neighborhood. We've seen it across the city. We've seen it at some of our public properties as well. And in conversations with staff recently, it, it was understood that there are additional mechanisms that we can start to implement through the code to give code enforcement the ability to clamp down on some of these loopholes that these offenders are finding. And so the request this evening would be just to be able to have that conversation with staff and really spend some time here to create an ordinance that starts to, you know, reduce the impacts that we see.
If there are no comments or questions, Mr. City Clerk, may you please do roll call?
Mayor Portemalindes?
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Tomayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Penalto?
Aye. And that passes with full consensus. Thank you very much.
Moving forward, I have some council orals that I would like my colleagues to please consider. The first one is kicking off our community budgeting process and requesting council consensus to direct staff to initiate the development and implementation of an inclusive community budgeting process for this year. This process should aim to actively engage our residents through, I believe, a dual approach. Last year, we did our first ever online survey. This year, I would like to augment our efforts, not only doing this online survey platform, but also doing in-person meetings held across various locations within our city, so that we could truly capture the diverse perspectives and priorities that can help shape our community's financial plan this incoming year. I want to ensure that the community input is captured prior to presenting the budget and ensure that this input is actively being incorporated in the final proposal. I believe our city manager has actually kickstarted that project, or kickstarted a plan for, for this community budgeting process, but I did want to go ahead and have council consensus to implement this, this plan. So if there are no questions, I would like to request that council consensus, if we can please have a roll call.
Mayor Portemalindes?
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Penalto?
Aye. Thank you. That passes with, with a full consensus. Next is, we heard a lot about urban forestry today, and with that, I would like to continue to expand our efforts. And so I am seeking council consensus to implement a mid-year budget amendment aiming to increase funding for the expansion of urban forestry initiatives. The significance of urban forestry, urban green infrastructure and tree management can really not be overstated, particularly as we learned communities like ours are polluted and have very limited resources that directly impact the daily lives and health of our, of our residents. Our current budget included a 50,000 allocation to kick off the city's first-ever tree replacement program, which staff has done a really great job at going through a list of requests stemming years back and planting nearly 153, 150 trees. Although commendable, this is not enough, and I would want to continue that effort, not, not necessarily replacing trees, but actually planting new trees and continuing our efforts of doing a comprehensive management plan moving forward. I am very excited to have a meeting with Tree People in, at the end of this month to see how, through their partnership, they can either financially or through capacity augment our efforts. So I am requesting to work with our city manager and staff to request a mid-year budget amendment to continue augmenting those efforts in expanding forestry initiatives in Montebello. If I can please, if there are no comments, yes?
Mayor, just a quick question. I'm completely in support of it, but increase in funding, is there like a specific number, or do we know?
So I don't necessarily have a specific number in mind, but I would like to work with our city manager and our finance director as far as finding an, an appropriate increase for this mid-year, mid-year allocation, but also ensuring that this new budget also incorporates that continued funding. So I guess we're having the ability to work with staff.
If I remember correctly, the, the amount that was previously appropriate was $50,000, which was expanded. So I would recommend that you allow us to propose a number that would be adequate based on the needs of the city and the requests, and then just be, and also considering the expansion of the project. And then I'll also add, if I remember correctly, Michael, we're tracking to bring mid-year budget amendments in February, right? So we'll be able to consider that.
That, that's correct. So with, with the mid-year report in February, we can, we can address this.
Perfect. Yes. So if consensus is given, would love to have those reports come in and learn a little bit more of how we are working on expanding that initiative. If there are no more comments, can I please have roll call?
Mayor Portemalindes?
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Penalto?
Aye. And that passes with four ayes and Councilmember Jimenez absent. Lastly, is just wanting to have the city be a sponsor for the Montebello Police Athletic Activities, our PAL program, or the PAL program, which is a 501(c)(3) organization that is recreation-oriented, utilizing athletics and activities to really tighten the bond between our police department and our community youth. The mission of PAL is dedicated to building self-esteem and confidence in our local youth through sports and recreational activities, and ultimately having an impact that results in our youth developing responsible, productive, and respectful citizens. This past year, the city council took really great efforts in supporting community-based organizations and associations in our community, like Ashia Sister Cities Association, the Montebello Chamber of Commerce, the Montebello Historical Society, among others, for the first time. And so I would like to just have council consensus to have the city act as a contributing sponsor to the efforts of the PAL program and ensure that they have the city's support and backing in their efforts to develop these activities for our youth. If there are no-
I have a comment?
Yes.
So the PAL program is fully integrated with our, our police department, and it really came as a shock at the, the chief's luncheon, the chief's holiday luncheon, that the city had no part in funding and supporting that program. Rosemary, Rosemary Sanchez, along with Bernal.
Armando.
Yeah, Rosemary and Armando have done an incredible job over the last decade building and supporting this program. And so, Mayor, just want to say that the, this step is very well-deserved for the hard work that they've put in, and very much appreciate you bringing this forward.
Absolutely, and cannot also thank you enough for really bringing this to my attention as well. And so if there are no additional comments or questions, if I can please have a roll call?
Mayor Portemalindes?
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Tomayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Penalto?
Aye. And that passes with four ayes and Councilmember Jimenez absent. And lastly, prior to adjourning, I would like to adjourn our meeting in honor of two very important residents that, residents and also figures in our community that have passed, and that is Bradley Brian Binder and Ms. Marge Villa. So Bradley Brian Binder was a 20-year-old Montebello resident who ultimately, who's ultimately passing deeply impacted us. Mr. Bradley attended Greenwood Elementary, La Merced, and Montebello High School. Additionally, he has contributed to the California Conservation Corps, gaining valuable insights into wildlife, plant life, and the California Chaparral. Reflecting on his experience, Bradley remarked working during the wildfire season was rugged, but it brought about many lasting memories. He not only was a resident of the city of Montebello, he attended our public schools, had family and friends, and also recited and worked in our city. And so I do extend my deepest condolences to his family for his passing. I would also like to end and adjourn today's meeting in honor of Ms. Marge Villa. Today, we are really full of pride and touch, and a touch of sorrow as we reflect on the incredible legacy of one of our own. The late Marge Villa, a shining star who graced the fields of Montebello and left an indelible mark on the world of sports. Marge journeyed through her early days playing softball on our local fields to her historic achievements in the All-American Girls Professional Baseball League has been nothing short of inspiring. On June 9th, 1946, she edged her name in history, setting records that still stand today, showcasing the spirit of Montebello to the world. Beyond her achievements in baseball, Marge's life took on new chapters. She became a champion, women's golfer at the Hacienda Golf Club in La Habra Heights, showcasing her versatility and determination that defined her. In 1988, Marge's impact on the world of sports was immortalized as she rightfully earned her place in the Baseball Hall of Fame. As we gather in August to dedicate a field at Grant Ray Park in her honor, we not only celebrated her achievements, but also acknowledged the woman behind the accolades, a daughter of Montebello, who in the face of challenges continued to shine brightly. Let us as a community continue to celebrate Marge's life, her contributions to sports, and enduring impact she has had in our city. May the field at Grant Ray Park stand as a testament to her spirit. In memory of Marge Villa, let us continue to strive for greatness inspired by the remarkable woman who will forever hold a special place in our hearts and in our community. May Marge's legacy live on in the stories we share and in the fields we play on. With that, if I can please have a moment of silence to honor them. Okay. If I can please have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. And a, and a second?
I second.
Okay. We are adjourning our meeting at 10:07. I thank everyone for their patience and participation today.